I see.
How many guys do we have?
It looks like just Obi.
Yeah, I didn't want to see two, Hal Harvison and me. Where's everybody else at?
I'm sure they'll get there.
You have Judah as well.
I mean, he starts to separate.
We're now live.
I see Moshe Inger as well. I think that gives us four, perhaps?
How do you figure? We see three of us.
I have you, Obi. I have Hal, Moshe Inger. I have an icon for, and I have an icon for Judah.
Right, four of us. You're right.
So there's four logged in. There's Moshe. Hey, there, bud.
Great.
Okay, I have Moshe Inger, Obi, Hal Harvison. That's it. Great.
I saw an icon for Judah. Yeah, he's there. So assuming that's Judah Ribbiat, then that's four.
Morty Gross is there. I see him now. Morty, Avram Napali is there. One, two, three, four.
Everyone.
One, two, four. So far, I see four. Obi, we have.
We have five members?
No, you can't. I have Abraham, Obi, and Morty Gross. I have three. Three that I can see. What is all that noise? It's echoing back. Somebody got something on? Hello?
I think you have at least five guys.
Wait a minute.
I see Abraham, Hal, Morty.
Evidently, Judah's having trouble logging in.
Okay. Moshe?
One, two, what? The meeting number? Hit join the meeting. Ready? Well, can you join the meeting? I'll give you the code.
I think Moshe Langkri's logging in too.
I can't hear you. I can't hold them all talking. One, two, eight, two, nine, eight, two, five, five.
Obi, I think a lot of background noise is coming from yours. Do you mute? Yeah, I'll mute. Give me a second.
E, C, E like an Edward, C like an Charles, P like a Peter, five, A, S like a Sam, oh, capital. You need a capital P, a five, capital A, capital S. E, E, I can't. Everybody's listening to me. E. You got the E? C like a Charles, E like a Peter.
Is that capital?
Yes.
Okay. Are all of these capitals?
Yes, except for the E and the C. Well, I can't help you out then. Find your old email. Well, I got a little. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to send it to Judah, see if he can log in. He's got trouble if he's logging in. Yes, good idea.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, guys.
Hi, everyone.
Hey, guys.
I'm trying to get Judah. Evidently, he's got trouble logging in. I'm looking for the email to send him because I can't hear what I'm saying.
Okay. Frank, it looks like we have seven members, Franny.
Okay, so we're gonna have to go without Judah.
For the time being, I just want to open it up.
Okay.
Before he goes, so we don't have, we got a lot of work to do, so we all want to make sure. Okay, this meeting has been posted as part of the.
Advertised properly.
I'm sorry, go ahead, friend.
Advertised by the sunshine law.
Sunshine law. Can I have roll call, please?
Mr. Gelli?
Yes.
Mr. Harvison?
Yes.
Mr. Langkri? Is Moshe on, Langkri?
I just saw him on. Yeah, Moshe.
He's on. He's near us.
I'm on. Okay.
Okay, Napali, Mr. Napali?
Unmuted.
Abraham is there. Okay. Ribbiat is trying to get on. I don't know why he's. Inger I see, Gross I see, Gonzalez. Harvison's gonna be late.
Yeah, it looks like Mr. Harvison's going to be late. Requested that I start the meeting.
Okay.
Start the meeting, just going forward. Do we have approval? I salute to the flag. We don't have one? But. Well, I have one. I don't have.
Oh, where's Jerry Dasty?
Jerry is not available this evening. We have his substitute, who is, where are you? Marty Buckley, right there.
And he has a flag in his corner there.
He's got a flag. There we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Welcome aboard. Franny, let's get approval of the minutes for September 14th.
I don't know what to tell you. I don't know. I can't do anything. One minute. One, one second. Jason? Jason, are you there? Amy's in. I have Judah Ribbiat on the phone. He says he logged in, but he can't get in. He says he can't get in because there's no audio and no video. He's in the meeting.
It should give him an option for audio and video.
You have an option there for audio and video?
On the bottom.
On the bottom. Your name is there, Judah.
I know, but I'm not getting audio.
Okay, let me do the roll call for the minutes. Okay, the minutes in September 14th, Obi?
Yes. Can I get a roll call for the minutes, September 14th? Can I get a motion for the approval? Motion by Mayor Gelli, second by Moshe Inger, Moshe. Langkri? Roll call, please.
Wait, who made that second?
Moshe Langkri.
Okay, Mr. Gelli. Mr. Gelli? Yes, okay, Mr. Harvison.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Mr. Langkri? Yes. Mr. Napali?
Yes.
Mr. Inger? Yes. Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez, and Harvison's not here. Okay, the first thing I have under correspondence.
Yep.
I have a letter from Miriam Weinstein, reference appeal number 4139A, which is Somerset and HLLC. Please be advised that the applicant has been speaking with the attorney and entered the Leisure Village Home Motors Association. We had hoped to have a agreement in place to proceed as planned this evening. It has become apparent at late hours that we will need a little more time to discuss all issues, so we are hereby requesting that this matter be carried to the next available hearing with no new notice required. Please confirm. The next meeting is November 9th.
Okay, I also had a copy of that letter. I'm sure we all have it. I don't have an objection to that. I understand that you're trying to work something out with the neighbors. Does anybody on the board have any objections?
Yes, I think we have to be more careful. Every time we have an agenda, we have things going on, and then last minute, we have to push it off because they're not ready. I think the public should know that if the time comes, they know about this already in advance. We had about two months in advance. We should be more careful so that the agenda can move, or else we have, we're stuck with the agenda. I just wanted to make sure that people know.
If I may, Miriam Weinstein, on behalf of the applicant, I'm terribly, terribly apologizing for the late notice. Just so you know, this objector only raised this to us Friday afternoon at 3:52 PM. Was when I got the first notice. I saw it about 5 o'clock, right before Shabbos set in. We first reached out to them last night. On Sunday, the applicant convened with all of our professionals to try to resolve this, and we had hoped this morning that we would be able to work it out. But it seems we need a little bit more clarification, and we were gonna need a little, you know, just a day or two more to work with them. That's why this happened. But I do apologize, and it really was not the applicant's fault.
I understand, Weinstein, but I realize this is happening Friday afternoon. We're trying to resolve this within a day. This has been two months. We didn't have a meeting last month. Let's, you know, whatever can be done beforehand, next time, let's try to make it happen. Thank you.
I guess you can ask Leisure Village why they didn't reach out to us until right before the meeting. They didn't reach out to us before the last meeting, so I can't explain that part.
If you're prepared without them, ready to go. See, if they're not ready, they're not ready.
Well, they just notified us that they wish to object, and they asked us to try to work with them. You know, the board usually likes us to try to, to try to work with the neighbors, which is the reason we're making the request. We have no problem going forward tonight, but the objector actually asked us to adjourn it.
Okay.
Uh, just so you know, I did get, I'm sure we all did, copies of the leisure engineer, uh, engineering division. It's dated October 16th, so Ms. Weinstein is correct. They just got in touch with them, objected to the application, so I can understand why you probably want to postpone it. I personally don't have a problem with it. I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. I just want to confirm what Abraham is saying, that if we postpone, is that at least next month, let's get this thing done so we can get it, you know, at least be able to vote on it, yea or nay, without any other extensions.
Oh, absolutely. This isn't the applicant, this isn't the applicant's idea to adjourn this. Like I said, we're prepared to proceed this evening, and I don't have a problem doing it. But as a courtesy to the neighbor, we did tell them, you know, at 4 o'clock this afternoon, they asked me to adjourn it, and I told them as a courtesy that we would do it, so.
Okay.
We will certainly be proceeding on the 9th.
Anybody else? I hear none. Can I get a, a motion so we could table this application to our next meeting with no new notice required?
Motion.
Waiver of time?
I'll make a motion to the table.
And who's that?
Mayor Gelli.
Mayor Gelli made a motion. Can I get somebody to second it?
My second.
Okay, second by Hal Harvison. Fran, roll call second.
Mr. Gelli?
Yes.
Mr. Harvison?
Yes.
Mr. Langkri? Mr. Langkri?
Yes.
Mr. Napali?
Yes.
Mr. Ribbiat, are you there? No, okay. Mr. Inger? Moshe, Inger? Mr. Gross is there, Gonzalez, Harvison.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, going forward, appeal number 40, for those that are online, appeal number 4139A has been tabled to our next meeting, which is November 9th. Frank, am I correct?
Yes.
On November 9th, this will be heard. So I'm expecting Somerset to be prepared. Okay? Are there any other communication plans?
No.
I tried doing it on my phone. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go out of line a little bit, because I'm expecting the chairman to get here. There is an application that the chairman is not gonna be sitting on anyway. He would be recused himself, so I'd like to start with that application first. It's been before previously. So, Frank, I want to go to appeal number 4161. Is the engineer, is anybody sitting on that particular application? 118 Ocean Avenue LLC.
Evening, Paul Schneider from Giordano Howard and Cisla here on behalf of the applicant. This has not as such been before the board before. What was before the board previously was an application involving two lots. Those lots being the current lot, 837 Lot 1, and 836 Lot 1. This application concerns only Lot 837 Lot 1. I will start with Brian Flannery, who can explain the application, and if there are any questions, explain the difference between this application and the prior application.
All right, Mr. Schneider, before you begin, Frank, can you please read it into the minutes, please?
Sure.
Appeal number 4161.
Appeal number 4161, 118 Ocean Avenue LLC, Vine Street, Washington Street, Lot 837 Lot 1, R40/R20C Zone. Use variance for six single-family lots in accordance with R10 zoning requirements. The report was technically dated September 26th. The property is located in the R40/20 Single Family Presidential Zone. None of the requested uses are permitted in this zone. Use density variance relief is necessary. Further, since questioning is not proposed, R40 Zone Bulk Standards apply, from which relief is necessary. Due to the absence of site design information, we recommend that necessary bulk variances be referred to major subdivision review, assuming use relief is granted.
Yes, it's a bifurcated application. We're seeking the use variance at this point. And, Miss Segal, I presume that you've received our proof of notice?
Yes.
So if the board's set, we'll start with Mr. Flannery.
Please go forth, Mr. Schneider.
Mr. Flannery.
I can be sworn in?
Yes.
Where's? Fine, can you swear in, please?
Mr. Flannery, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, Lieutenant Lieutenant Flanner. The application is for Lot 837 Lot 1, a 60,000 square foot lot, between Washington Avenue and Vine Avenue. The applicant has submitted a rendering showing the tax map version of where it is. It also has frontage on Spruce Street. Spruce Street terminates in a dead end at the cemetery to the east, and then Spruce Street proceeds out to, out and across Route 9 West. Washington Avenue begins to the location of affordable housing projects by access to the affordable housing, townhouses to the southeast of us. To the, uh, is an R12 zone. The subject property, for an R40 development, is not suitably located based on the traffic volume and the impact related to affordable housing. This would be what I would term a transitional use.
Excuse me, excuse me. This is Jan Meyer. I'm an attorney. I like to be, enter my appearance in this matter before you go right into the hearing on this, on this particular application. I like to be recognized first.
Mr. Meyer, who do you represent?
I represent Mr., first of all, I do represent a homeowner in the township of Lakewood, and I represent actually Mr. Davis.
Okay.
But even if I did not represent someone, I still have an opportunity to enter my appearance on the record if I may.
I don't, we don't have any objections to that. Anybody on the board have any objections? Morty?
No, because who are you representing again?
I represent Mr. Davis.
Mr. Davis, okay.
I just wanna, I want to first address the issue of this hearing tonight, if I may.
Mr. Schneider, you have an issue with that? But you're trying to mute yourself?
Mr. Schneider, you're muted.
No, you're muted, Mr. Schneider. We can't hear you.
Okay. Does Mr. Davis have a first name?
Yes, he has a first name.
And what would that be, sir?
His first name is, is Tvi. Tvi Davis is his legal name.
And where does he reside?
He resides in Lakewood, around the corner. I think right outside 200 feet of the, of the, of the site we're talking about.
Is there a street address?
Yes, I don't remember his street address, but I can find it for you very shortly. Let me just look it up for you. I am so sorry about that. That was not really the point tonight, of course, but. As a back. If it's important for you, I'll look it up for you. Hold on, sir. I believe in 619 Spruce.
Thank you. Obi, stop being disturbed.
Jude, I just want to let you know that I've been on already for the last five, six minutes.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you, Judah.
I've been listening in, but now I have actually audio on video.
Okay, great.
Certainly, Mr. Meyer has a right to cross-examine witnesses and make a statement after the witnesses are complete and present any witnesses he may have. I don't understand why he's interrupting the proceeding at the outset.
I, Mr. Snyder, if I may, I guess I have a right to, for number one, put my appearance on the, on effort, which is normal customary before land use board, number one, and number two. Also, I think your client had an agreement with my client and other people that before he would go back before the, this, this application has a history. It was once before the board, about approximately, little more than, more than a year ago, a year and a half ago, this matter was before the board. And then some litigation occurred. As a result, Mr. Snyder's client withdrew the application. And I understand it's basically the same application that is before as today, that Mr. Snyder is trying to put on, as was prior to the litigation. As a result of the litigation, I guess the applicant withdrew and, and had a, so to speak, a discussion and an agreement with my client, my client and, and some other people in the neighborhood. He was gonna give them advance notice before he would go back on with this application. That is my understanding. Now that did not happen, and therefore, was certainly a little baffled by this, this matter being heard here tonight. So, number one, I will ask that the acting chair, I understand, who's the acting chair tonight?
I am, Ober Gonzalez.
Let me see where you are, Mr. Gonzalez. Oh, there you are. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you. Okay. I also run zoning board meetings, and sometimes with a lot of people, it makes it hard to see where you are. But anyway, Mr. Gonzalez, so there was a gentleman's agreement between the parties, the way I understand. And now, they put it on without giving any deference to that gentleman's agreement. So I am going to ask the board that they adjourn the matter. If you'd like to look at the plans again, see if there was any change. Initially, I understand, and I haven't had a chance. I was just retained this afternoon because they were, I guess the notice went out, but my client is a little outside the 200 feet, and therefore did not receive a notice. And regardless of the violation of this gentleman's agreement, coming before you tonight would be an undue disadvantage to my client, and give me, does not give me the ability to study the plans, have some of my experts and planner and architect that I foresee bringing, study the plans in advance so I can prepare proper cross-examination of any and all experts or witnesses that the applicant is bringing forth here tonight. So I think it's a very legitimate reason that this matter should be adjourned at least one cycle.
Well, my only question at that, Mr. Meyer, is that how does this affect your client besides a gentleman's agreement? If he's within the 200 radius area, you know, there's a reason to inform him. We don't want to inspire it as far as the applicant and your client, because that was apparently a verbal agreement amongst them. I see, oh, Mr. Schneider, which is a representative, what's going on? You know, the applications before us, and rightfully so, should hear the application.
And on behalf of my client, my client.
Mr. Gonzalez. There was a lot of feedback. I apologize.
My client had no gentleman's or any other agreement of any other type with anyone.
If you're outside the 200 feet, that you don't have any, any of the same rights as any other applicant and any other person that would like to object to this application or any other application, I'm not following, Mr. Gonzalez.
You're welcome, Mr. Meyer. You're welcome to hear the application and do whatever objections are necessary. I don't think, you know, that the application itself is not the same as the one that was before it, though similar. The difference is that this is only one parcel that they're looking at. So I don't see how that affects the applicant at all.
Record, just for the record, my client had no agreement with anyone with regard to anything regarding this property. This was properly noticed in accordance with the municipal land use law. In fact, the notice actually went out and was published in the paper a day or two earlier than required. And yes, you know, Mr. Meyer can certainly cross-examine and offer witnesses should he desire to, but I just don't see why this application cannot and should not proceed.
Well, Mr. Snyder, if you say that this is a little different and the lot, the lot as opposed to two lots last time, and also that your client had afforded to have it published during the Jewish holidays, I think that was a deliberate attempt to try to snow at least my client or nobody, anyone. try to snow at least my client and nobody, anyone else, my client in inability uh, to proceed in a proper order with preparing a proper witness to come and, and be available here tonight to cross, to, to testify and also to cross-examine, prepare my cross-examine of uh, witnesses. But Mr. Gonzalez, I, I just wanna put on the record that I, I, I think it's a little, um, I won't say unfair, but I think it's a misstatement of uh, the municipal land use law that because my client is outside the two hundred feet, that it doesn't have the same effect on my client, uh, and the um, that the, th- this, this development will have, uh, it is the, it is a development that, you know, almost where one and a half structure technically could be placed upon since the requirement is forty thousand square feet per lot as opposed to uh, putting six homes on sixty uh, thousand square feet. Uh, uh, so, you know, it will affect anyone in, in, in a township, and anyone has the same right, of course, to make the objections.
Chairman, I, I'd like to say something. He's testifying. What are we doing?
I'm testifying. Mr. Helverson, I'm sorry, I'm not testifying.
Yes, you are. I think we should.
This is what you should put on the, on the record. Okay, I, I, I just, I'm asking the, the board kindly that we had the opportunity to proper prepare. I, I, I think deliberately done that this matter was noticed during the holidays, the Jewish holidays and, and everybody, a lot of people adhere to those holidays and don't uh, pay attention to the papers and anything else. Uh, I, and again, uh, my understanding of this gentleman's agreement, I'll ask the chair again, Mr. Gonzalez, if you please can uh, uh, approve my request that the matter, there's not gonna be a difference to the applicant whether this is gonna be heard this month or next month, but a big difference to my client who wants to bring in people to testify.
Ju- ju- just for the record, just for the record, my client didn't schedule October nineteenth as a Lakewood Township zoning board meeting. The zoning board scheduled the meeting for this date and the notice requirements in relation to this date are set by the municipal land use law. So to suggest that my client somehow manipulated the process to deny people their rights to notice and to practice religion is just nonsense since my client didn't decide that October nineteenth, twenty twenty was gonna be a zoning board meeting. It's, it was properly noticed, um, Mr. Meyer and his client and everyone else have the notice established by the municipal land use law to prepare to come in here and offer whatever objections they may have. And this is not some complex elaborate site plan involving, you know, scores of acres. We're talking a sixty thousand square foot lot divided into six ten thousand square foot lots. It, it's, it's a very straightforward application that doesn't require, um, you know, weeks of preparation.
No, Mr. Schneider, we've been here before on this, on this property. We all know there's a lot more history to it. It's not just a simple six lot application.
That's all it is.
Yeah, can we, do my fellow board members, do my fellow board members believe that this is a simple six lot application or we all remember the history and the contention and the videos that were shown to us by the neighbors and all, and everything which is going on, on this piece of property?
Board members, do you remember?
Yes.
The videos and the traffic and everything else that took place and uh, any board members?
Are you polling the board members for their opinion?
Yes, I'm polling the board members for their opinion.
So then I'll go first. You just start with the G in any case.
Go ahead, man.
Uh, there was two weeks of advertisement, nobody, there's not, there's not reason to hold this up at all. And um, Meyer would like to cross-examine, whether this is a, this is a procedure to continue. May, may I just, as, I, I, before the board is, is making a decision on whether or not to continue or not, I just wanna say two things. Number one, uh, as Sir Gross indicated before, I believe, that there was a, a very contentious uh, presentation and, and was a large opposition and people came out. Um, and also, I, I believe that, uh, and Mr. Snyder, just to your, I don't know if you know who I am, but I've been practicing municipal land use law for more than twenty years, so I am, I'm very well familiar. I'm not saying that you didn't adhere to the notice requirements. I'm just saying, as it happens, uh, when you come before a board, you can ask that the matter be heard in a specific day if the, the time is available. And I, I think in this case, maybe that was not that way, but it was done in a different way with the, not of an ill intention of you, uh, but maybe at design. But let, let's go back to the issue. I, if someone recalled, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Mr. Gross, maybe you recall this better than I do. Uh, the last time, last time the matter was denied, correct? Was that correct, Mr. Gross?
No, the matter was denied, it's not, the matter was taken off the table and the application was gone.
And, and, and Obie, it was a different application.
That's correct.
It was on to both sides of the street, not just one side of the street. My point about bringing this up and saying that, that we've, we've talked about it before is just, I think that Mr. Schneider, I'm not saying you're being intentionally, um, you know, obvious issue over here, but this is not just a simple application, let's understand that. We know the history here. So convince us why, Mr. Schneider, why we should um, proceed? And I think, Mr. Meyer, you should convince us why we should give more time to your client to work this out.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Respect. Not enough that he should, he has rights. He takes notice, time, the attorney's writing, it should be heard, he's right. Let's move on. Sorry, before we, we wasted the last fifteen minutes, whether to, whether to hear his ring. It's not, it's not, all of us are sitting on this board, waiting to hear the issues done. I, I'm sorry, Mr. Snyder, I'm not here.
Obie?
Tried your point, one word.
Everybody has to mute their mics or else we can't hear. Everybody who's not talking must mute their mics, cause there's so much background noise impossible to hear.
Thank you. Thank you, Rivier.
I, I, Mr. Kelly, I, I, I don't know what happened, but I didn't hear more than something about Mr. Meyer and that was, I'm sorry.
So I'll say it again. He advertised correctly and he has a right to be heard and we're sitting here ready for twenty days discussing what they should be heard in. It's on the agenda, we should move forward.
Hello. There, for some reason I, my microphone wasn't working. Um, but, but I have to agree with Mr. Schneider, I have to agree with um, different uh, board members uh, who indicate that Mr. Schneider uh, properly noticed this uh, application under the municipal land use law. Um, Mr. Meyer and his client, a cross-examining anybody but anybody they want at the end of the application, but I see no reason that this matter can't move forward, but then again, it is the board's prerogative if they will um, uh, agree to Mr. Meyer's request. But in any event, it's properly noticed and I do not see a reason why it can't move forward.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Mr. Gonzalez, I also have another issue uh, that I would like to uh, talk about. Number one, I've got two issues. Number one, uh, since the, I believe there was a, there was, this application didn't come only once before the board, I think it came twice. One time it came with a lot size for each unit of ten thousand square foot and that got denied. So number one, I wanna put on the record that I believe it is collateral, stop and rest judicata, the matter has been heard before the board and was denied. So there is no jurisdiction or there's no uh, remedy for this board to hear this matter again. That's number one. And there's been no substantial change from that application in terms of the greater design. In other words, the municipal land use law is very clear that if there's a substantial change to a prior application have been heard or denied, it can be heard again. Here, there has been no offer of, of proof, of proffer, that this is a substantially different application. And I think that's the number one issue, and I'm sure counsel will agree with me, with the board, that that is the number one issue that has to be heard. The other thing is, if you go ahead and, and, and decide that over my objection or behalf of my client, uh, with the rest judicata and collateral stubble issues, as well as that the fact that we have, we would like to have this matter adjourned for other reasons, that it should not be bifurcated. Why should we come and have it bifurcated, have to come back again and do the whole thing over? It is, it is very important that the design and the land use, uh, uh, planning is done in the same, at the same time, it's very connected. It is not like a, 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 a large, large tract where the, you know, you're putting down a, a school in middle of a field where there's no neighbors. He has a lot of neighbors, the design, as well as the um, the design of the land, uh, the land use design, uh, uh, is, is very related to each other. So I, I, I don't believe that it's appropriate for this board, appropriate for this applicant to ask that the matter be bifurcated.
Mr. Snyder, can you please put up?
Sure. I, let, let me respond to both of those issues in the order that they were presented. First, with regard to the rest judicata issue, it's not the same application because this involves one lot, whereas the other application involved two lots. The case law in New Jersey is clear that the slightest change in an application defeats any claim of rest judicata. I would cite the board to the decision of the New Jersey Supreme Court in Russell versus Board of Adjustment of Tenafly, which is reported at thirty-one New Jersey Reports, page fifty-eight, as well as the case decided by the Supreme Court of New Jersey in Bresnan versus Gash, which is reported at one thirty-one New Jersey Reporter, five seventeen. And there, very minimal changes to an application defeat the claim of rest judicata. Here, there was an application involving two lots. One application for two lots, one to the west of Washington Avenue, another to the east of Washington Avenue. That lot to the east of Washington Avenue is no longer part of the, of the application. It's not involved in this application. That's a very substantial change.
You want me to respond to that? I think we're frozen here. I think we're frozen.
Yeah. Mr. Meyer, before you respond to that, I'd like to hear from Martin Buckley, our attorney. Martin, I'm sure you hear what's going on?
Yes.
You respond?
Sure. Uh, I'm gonna have to believe, I'm gonna have to agree with Mr. Schneider on this. I, I think there's enough change between the two applications, um, that it would defeat any issue or claim for any under rest judicata. Um, I don't know if Terry has anything to add to that about the differences in the two applications. I agree with Mr. Schneider and I don't believe we have an issue there.
Well, I, I, I would just wanna be heard on the issue. Mr. Snyder, um, the Bresnan case is a hardship case and, and it has a whole different slew of issues here. This is a substantially the same application, uh, uh, and, and I think, well, let, let's pull the applications up. Let's pull the first application, it was ten thousand uh, uh, square feet for each of these lots that were subdivided and that's exactly what we have here today. There is no other, whether it's one lot or two lot, whether the lot is across the street. The, the, see, the reason on rest judicata is grounded in the fact that we are not hearing the same case again and get a second bite of the apple. And this is what they're doing here, they're trying to get the second bite of their same apple because the first time.
Obie.
Yeah.
We got our answer from our attorney. I think we should proceed.
Okay.
But I, I think it's a, it's a.
To the chair.
Go ahead, Mayor.
May I speak? May I speak? I, I, I'd like to speak to Mr. Mayor for a minute. Um, two questions for you. Number, number one, who are you representing?
I'm representing Mr. Davis.
Mr. Davis, okay. So um, I'm, is he aware uh, that it's only one piece of the action here, one part of the street that's being uh, uh, it's half? The last time it was turned down and it was asked that the two sides should cooperate and speak, which I was involved in, in that, in asking uh, at the, at this board, I asked both sides to get together, was for this side closer to Mr. Davis and Mr. Zax and Mr. Shapiro. It seems like they won their battle. That lot closest to them is not being subdivided tonight. So I don't understand the, uh, why you're here making a, a, a fuss about this. And second, we've heard much worse, uh, rest judicata, I think you can just move on because in Lakewood, we've seen uh, much uh, smaller changes and, and, and it was, and it moved on. So if you have something else to say, uh, let, let's say it, because I would like to hear the case and then if there's something, uh, something that you would like to fight on afterwards, you, you're welcome to, to protest afterwards, but we need to move on. We can't, we can't spend the whole night.
I don't protest.
On.
Thank you.
You wanna, you wanna protest at the end or if you bring up a claim at the end, I think, I think we're ready to move on and.
I, I, I just.
That's just my opinion and I think most of the board members are ready to hear.
I just wanna make a point then for.
This application.
I'm sorry.
Unless you bring up something new.
Right, I, I'm sorry, your name is Mo Pizza, well, I'm sorry, your name is Moshe?
For the record, from what I understand.
What, what is your last name, sir? I'm sorry.
Moshe Langree. Mo Pizza, they know me in Lakewood as Mo Pizza.
Okay. I, I, I'm sorry.
You'd be happy with this application the way it is.
Somebody mentioned, Mr. Mr. Pizza. I didn't need your last name, I'm sorry if you don't mind. I didn't hear.
I'm also having a hard time hearing.
Mr. Meyer, it's Mr. Lawrence Langree.
Langree, okay.
Langree, Langree A E O Y.
So, Mr. Langree, I, I, I just wanna do, number one, I, I, I don't, um, you know, uh, the, the, I just wanna say that the, number one, the reason my client is interested in this case, of course, it is because it, it changes the neighborhood. It changes the way the lots are being used and therefore, since you asked what my client's interest in it, it is amongst that. It is, it is a, he moved out to this area around Bruce Street for the sole purpose of having large lots which required, was zone for forty thousand square feet each and not for having smaller lots cut into, I wouldn't say pizza, pizza pieces, but, but cut into ten thousand, smaller lots of ten thousand, uh.
This is, this is giving a speech. This is totally inappropriate. Just because you're a lawyer, you don't have the right to come into a zoning board to interrupt the proceedings.
Hello, whoa, whoa, Mr. Snyder, let I finish. As far as I'm concerned, okay, you, Mr. Meyer, okay, let's get this thing straight. You're addressing the board members and we'd like to move forward with this application.
Right.
Okay, so I was, you wait to hear the application first and at that time, we're involved, how do you feel that you can bring up your objections? But at least, let us, let us get this application so we can go forward.
I was responding to a question and that's why I, I, I answered, but uh, But, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, I also, the issue of the bifurcation, I, I, I don't think it's appropriate in this matter, especially now that you're saying that there's no rest judicata.
Obviously, Mr. Meyer, we heard your objections at a bifurcation. I think we can move on.
We thank you for that, but we'll consider it going forward. But right now, I'd like to continue with the application. So, Mr. Snyder, do you present your application?
Sure. Mr. Flannery, could you first present your qualifications, and we're gonna ask the board to accept you as an expert, and then we'll go from there.
Licensed professional, I'm a planner and architect in the state of New Jersey. I testify before the Lakewood Planning Board since early eighties. I've testified before hundreds of planning boards and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey, uh, since the eighties.
So I'd like to request that the board please recognize Mr. Flannery as an expert planner.
We recognize Mr. Flannery, and I've just forgotten, he's been here many times. Can I say you?
Can I ask a question? Can I, can I proffer?
Can you, we're gonna let him continue. Mr. Meyer, so we can move forward with this application. You'll have your chance to ask the questions as you want the application, absolutely after he's presented.
I, I, I think I'm entitled to proffer his qualifications as a planner with plans that he has there. I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm sure he is a, no, okay, fine. All right. Okay, thank you.
Hi, Brian.
So could you proceed with?
Application as submitted is a bifurcated application for lot one in block eight, uh, the property as I described previously.
I, I cannot hear what he says, and I cannot see the board. I, I think I'm entitled to that at least.
If everybody, please mute unless you're talking.
Yes, thank you.
And, and the boards were submitted to, uh, the township of Lakewood, so they should be available online. The, um.
But you're testifying, I'm sorry, but if the, if the, if the planner, he's an expert, as a, offered as expert, as a planner in this matter, for this particular application, Mr. uh, uh, Flannery is pointing to a map that he cannot, you cannot see, and therefore, we don't know what he's testifying to. I mean, at least.
Mr. Meyer.
No.
Mr. Meyer, let's finish. Well, the objection that I have to that is that you were notified just recently about this situation. If your, if your client, uh, was that interested, he would have been giving you that information. We as board members received the plans and everything else, so we know exactly what he's talking about, and if you knew ahead of time what was going on, then you could have requested, and, and, uh, application would have simply been sent to you via email, so you can see what we're seeing. So we, you know, he, he is testifying, we'd like to hear his testimony.
Yeah, but I. I'm sorry, I am sorry. This is highly improper. I've been doing.
This whole situation with COVID is highly improper, and that's what caused it. If we had a regular meeting, it would be much easier.
No, that's not true.
We're trying to, we're trying to, uh, work as best we can with what we have.
Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Meyer, in light of the situation we're in with a virtual hearing, can we just get through to testimony, and then you would have the opportunity to speak? Otherwise, it's more than be here all night.
Yes, well, listen, I need a fair testimony to be heard. I, I, I.
And we're trying to give that to you, but every time you object, and every time you interject, it delays the fairness of this hearing. So if Mr. Flannery could please continue with his testimony, and I, as I believe Mr. Flannery indicated, the, the plans are available online. Is that correct, Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley, Mr. Buckley, as counsel for the board, I think you are taking this to a totally new level. You know the municipal land use law as well as I do. I have the right on behalf of my client to get due process. I am not getting due process. Mr. Flannery, and, and let me just parenthetically to edification of this board, I, I'm, I'm sure you have many more meetings than I have under my belt, but I am a, 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 a zoning chairman for the board, and when a, a, a witness testifies and used demonstrative evidence before the board, the, the screen is shared with everyone, and the witness can point to where the testimony is going. That is only fair, you can, I, I, it's like having a murder trial, and you, you can see whether the, the demonstrative evidence or any other evidence that's, whether it's a civil, this is a trial, this is a, a, you are a quasi judicial entity. We're supposed to, yes, we relax the rules of evidence a little bit, I don't have to lecture you very well.
I think we, we understand your objection, Mr. Meyer.
I, I understand that, but I think it's only fair if, if the planner, who's a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, wants to testify, and you're already over, and I, I, I didn't object to his qualification, I just wanted to hear a little bit more about his qualification. You didn't let me do that, but that's okay. But if he testifies and points to stuff, and, and shows certain things, I think it's only fair that the applicant can see what he's protesting, the, the, the board members can see what he's testifying and pointing to, and the opposition, the objectors can do that. I'm sure Mrs. Ms. Stern is also saying that is for sure done all the time. I mean, I understand we have COVID times, but, and, and it's done on, on Zoom or Webex, but we are not out of this ability to do that. There's a button on, on the, on the, uh, on this feature, that anyone can, uh, superimpose either the plan itself, or PDF of the plan, and the, the witness can, can show what he's testifying to. How am I gonna see what he's pointing at?
Obie, we.
How, how the board members are gonna see what he's pointing at?
Mr. Obie.
Mr. Ben.
Just for the record, if I could, uh, point out that not only is it available online, but the public notice that was published in the newspaper, as well as that, that what was sent to those within two hundred feet, gave, um, a contact information at my law firm, so that anyone who was interested had the opportunity to have these exhibits emailed to them directly from my law firm. So this is certainly, we're, we're operating under certain constraints because of COVID, and, you know, there's no denial of due process under the circumstances, where all of these exhibits have been made available to everyone, including Mr. Meyer, had he contacted Ms. Siegel before the meeting, had he contacted my office before the meeting, he'd have all of this.
Can you just tell him the documents right now, and then he'll be able to see them?
Brian, can you bring your, your, is that just closer?
I don't even, I don't even need this exhibit, plus, this application is so straightforward. What I'm pointing at is a, a yellow highlighted, uh, the lot on sheet one thirty-five of the tax map. We all know what sheet one thirty-seven of the tax map is. It, it seems that the attorney that's objecting here is very easily with this application. We all know where the lot is. I'm explaining where the lot is, and I have the easel with the map, it's more for my reference than anything else. The property, it's a sixty thousand square foot lot, uh, uh, with frontage on Washington Avenue to the east, fronting, fronting on Spruce Street to the north, fronting on Vine Avenue to the, to the west. Uh, the, uh, sixty thousand square feet in the R forty twenty cluster zone, that is the same zone that the Affordable Housing Project, that, uh, catty-cornered to the southeast from this project was constructed in. It's a, uh, the, the lot, to the west, there's its own boundary line, for all of the lots to the west of us on Spruce Street and Reed Street, uh, are in an R twelve zone, the majority of them are ninety foot wide widths. Our application is to subdivide this into one hundred foot by one hundred foot lots. It's a transition from the, uh, the, the, uh, Affordable Housing Property, uh, the, uh, the further down Spruce Street is where the residential houses are built in accordance with that. Uh, we, we have a very busy street, Washington Avenue. The, uh, traffic engineer that was retained by the applicant will, will tell you how busy this street is. The, uh, uh, Washington Avenue is what separates, uh, this property from the more residential character of the neighborhood to the east on Spruce Street. A catty-cornered across the street from us to the northeast is, uh, Base Kayla School. Uh, Base Kayla also owns the vacant property right across the street from us. Uh, the, uh, an aerial was submitted to the board, but I, I think everybody on the board, as has been indicated, this project where this location has been before the board in the past, uh, uh, it, it's a very prominent location in town. The Affordable Housing Project is to the southeast, it's townhouses, uh, at a density exceeding ten units per acre. The R forty, uh, zone permits residential at a density of one point oh nine units per acre, and we're asking for a density of four point three six dwelling units per acre. Uh, this is not an easy application, but as Mr. Snyder indicated, it, it, it's a very simple, uh, application to understand. We have sixty thousand square feet. We feel that the proper use of this site as a transition would be six ten thousand square foot lots. Uh, in this zone, schools are permitted use. Uh, the, the board certainly knows that, uh, a, a school use in the town is something that, uh, is in high need, uh, and, uh, almost every zone in Lakewood permits schools because of the, the need for that schools. If the applicant wanted to put a school here, it would be a by right application. The, uh, intensity of the use and the traffic generated would far exceed the six residential units that, that we're proposing. Um, the, um, uh, uh, it, it, again, it, it's, it's not an easy application, and if it was an easy application, we wouldn't be at the zoning board. The zoning board doesn't do easy applications. This is a density variance. We bifurcated the application. My testimony is that bifurcating the application makes sense because my professional opinion and the opinion of the applicant is that the six ten thousand square foot lots here make sense. Uh, if the, uh, the board agrees with us, we'll come back with a subdivision plan for, uh, the six ten thousand square foot lots. Everybody in Lakewood, certainly everybody in the board, knows what a ten thousand square foot, single family detached residential lot in Lakewood is like. There, there's no surprise to that. Uh, looking at Terry's report, uh, it, it's, it's very short, the, uh, under zoning and waivers, it indicates that we're in the R forty twenty zone. Again, that's the same zone that the Affordable Housing Project was developed under. Uh, the, um, uh, we're asking for a, a D variance for density. Uh, with respect to the reasoning, that it's my opinion that the, the density variance makes sense. Uh, if you go to the Lakewood Master Plan of two thousand and seventeen, on page two under background information, uh, it starts on the population growth, and, and it goes through all the population growth, uh, that we've seen, and it concludes on page three, uh, by saying, based on this information, it's therefore important that Lakewood plan for residential development to house its growing population. It's my testimony that this application does that. Uh, on the same two thousand and seventeen master plan, on page seven under division statement, it says, encourage growth and development in appropriate locations and consistent with established land uses. This is consistent with established land uses. The Washington Avenue provides a very prominent, uh, border between, um, uh, the, uh, residential, the, the very low density residential, and, and a density that's particularly low in Lakewood, uh, to the east on Spruce Street, and, and the, uh, Lakewood Affordable Housing and the R twelve zone and the schools across the street. Uh, so it, it's my testimony, uh, that this is smart growth, and, and it provides the housing opportunities that were indicated. Under the master plan, the strategies in the same two thousand and seventeen master plan, on page eight, it says, uh, create a range of housing opportunities and choices, and, and the township has done that. They did that with the Affordable Housing, they did it with the R twelve, they did it with the R forty twenty, uh, clustering, and, and, and the, the residential houses on, on the, uh, further east on Spruce Street, they, they are very quiet, one of the only quiet residential neighborhoods in Lakewood. When they come out of their neighborhood to Washington Street, the, the traffic is very busy. And the traffic is gonna be busy. If nothing gets built on this lot, it's gonna be very, much busier if a school gets built on this lot, and, and it's gonna be a little busier if six houses get built on the lot. Uh, and, and the traffic engineer, engineer will talk more to that, um, uh, in his testimony on page twenty-three of the, uh, master plan, uh, under, uh, traffic and parking. It indicates the traffic congestion and the shortage of parking, uh, and, and it, and it gives strategies for, uh, providing the parking onsite, which when we come back with the subdivision, we'll show the board that we have sufficient onsite parking. There'll be turnaround so that nobody has to back out onto, uh, Washington Avenue. Then we go to the Municipal Land Use Law, NJAC forty colon fifty-five D two, under purposes of the act. Uh, A is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands and estates in a manner which will promote public health, safety morals, and general welfare. This, the subject property is not a lot that is desirable for one single family home to be built on. Per the ordinance, we can build one and a half. Nobody builds one and a half houses, so you, you, you build one house. It, it's, nobody's gonna wanna build their one house there where they have Vine Avenue on one side and, and Washington Avenue on the other side. So it's either something, uh, less, more than one house or a school. Uh, and I, I, I've seen a lot of neighborhoods, uh, where the schools come in, and, and I'm trying not to make it sound like a threat, because that's not the intention, but the reality is that if the board were to say, nope, just build one house, the applicant is only gonna have one, uh, solution, and that's a school. And everybody in Lakewood likes schools until you build one near their house, because the schools generate traffic, and this area already has more traffic than it should get. Um, under, uh, G of the same Municipal Land Use Law, provide sufficient space in, in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, and commercial uses. And it's my testimony that this does this. So we're asking for a D variance, uh, where in particular cases and, and for special reasons, to grant an increase in density. And it's my testimony that this property is particularly suited as a transition use for the six ten thousand square foot lots that are being requested. Uh, and my testimony is that this relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and will not substantially impair the intent and purposes of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And my testimony is that because with respect to the public good, this is either gonna be something more than one house or a school, and something more than one house, and specifically the six that we're requesting, uh, it makes sense. Uh, and with respect to the zone plan and zoning ordinance, it, it's in such a location and of such insignificance that it certainly does not adversely impact the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Um, further, further on in the R V E report, um, uh, they request, um, uh, in, in overview of the forthcoming development, it, it's gonna be six ten thousand square foot, single family houses. Uh, the, you know, they're, they're gonna have a basement and, uh, and six bedrooms, and they're gonna provide four parking spaces and an area on both streets for the cars to turn around so they don't have to back out on the streets. Uh, with respect to the architectural information that'll be provided, when we come in for the subdivision, we will certainly agree to the upgraded architectural fronts, we'll agree to the irrigation, and we'll, we'll agree to all the items that make these houses, uh, nicer, uh, and, and appropriate, and something that, that we can all be proud of.
Could we get a school instead?
Excuse me?
Could we get a school instead? We prefer a school.
I, 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 I'm in the middle of testimony. Who, who's asking me questions?
No, we're just asking. We want a vote on a school instead.
Who, who's asking? I don't know who's asking.
Neighbor. Neighbors.
The neighbor's asking. In, in the middle of my testimony, a neighbor asks questions.
No, we asked you to have a school.
Okay. Any objectors, any objectors will have.
Any objectors will have the opportunity at the end.
Oh, because you said something about a school, so we just want to know if we could do that now instead.
No, you can't do it now. You got to wait till the end.
Oh, okay.
So the review comments also make a comment about duplexes. There would be no duplexes in this area. It's not appropriate for duplexes. As a transition between the multifamily and the affordable housing and the R12 lots, the 10,000-square-foot lots as proposed are appropriate. Due to the depth of the lot, the 200 feet, in order to break it into the appropriate sizes, if the dimensions had been a little different, the areas might be a little different. But under the circumstances, 100-foot-wide lots are wider than most of the adjoining lots along Spruce Street, and the depth of the lots, the only one that sees that is the people in the backyard. So that's my testimony. I think it's a very simple application to understand. It's a difficult application, though, because it's a D-variance that we're requesting, and my testimony is that I feel this is the appropriate use. And you'll hear from the traffic engineer with respect to the traffic to give you the numbers, what the numbers are, the traffic on Washington Avenue, the traffic on Spruce Street. A lot of traffic is in a lot of areas in town. Few extra houses. It's still going to be a lot of traffic. A school, it's going to be a disaster. That's my testimony.
Excuse me, Chairman, Mr. Terry?
Yes, Terry, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to put something on the record. We had an error in our third comment that Brian just talked about, where it says duplex development. That should have been, if the board feels, R10's single-family development. I just want to put that on the record.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Do any board members have any questions of Brian?
Yes, I do, to the chair. Mentioning schools, just a sidebar, the school is a school across the road, and I think to have another school there would be horrendous. But if you go further north from this lot, there's a development there or single-family homes. What size lots are those?
Those lots, it's the Pine River Village, and the lot there is 30 feet by 100 feet.
And further down, Washington? Or, I should say, the other side of Base Kayla?
The other side of Base Kayla, to the west, is R12. And you have a lot of 90 by 130 lots, 97 by 123. To the west, it's R12. The Pine River Village has 3,000-square-foot lots. Mayor, you got your answers?
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any questions from Brian? Okay, Mr. Snyder, do you have any other expert testimony that's going to, that you want to present? Could you have them?
Yes, I do.
Okay, can you make the presentation?
Sure. Mr. Justin Taylor.
Mr. Taylor, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth?
I do.
Can I state your name for the record?
Justin Taylor, T-A-Y-L-O-R.
Thank you.
Do I have an opportunity to cross-examine? You asked for members of the board, and then you didn't ask me to give you a chance.
Obi, if everybody would turn off their mics when they're not speaking, it's just so much background noise you can hardly hear.
That's perfect.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes. You asked if the members of the board have any questions of the planner.
Right.
And then you asked, and you didn't ask me if I had any question of the planner.
Okay, do you want to wait to hear the whole testimony so then you can go through all your questions? We've done it in the past that way. This way, it's easier. You can do the planner and traffic or whatever witnesses he has.
No, I would like to do one witness at a time, so everybody understands what the testimony, remembers the testimony of each witness. I think that's the most appropriate way to do it, since it's what we call cross-examination.
Well, we've done it in the past in different ways, but fine, Mr. Meyer, I'll give you that opportunity.
Thank you.
Let's just not belabor it. Let's just move forward.
Well, we'll see where we go. Mr. Flannery, good evening.
Brian, okay, good.
Good evening.
Okay. Now, you testify as a planner here tonight, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And in that, you reviewed, what did you review in preparing for your testimony here tonight?
I reviewed the plans that were submitted. I reviewed the master plan, the zoning ordinance, the municipal land use law, and the tax maps.
Okay. So you reviewed the municipal land use law. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Right. And specifically, you looked at the subsection of the municipal land use law that deals with variance under the section D, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And is it true, you told me, is it section 40, you told me that this, you told everybody that this is a difficult application, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you say it's difficult because, hold, my battery is running low, hold on, I'm sorry. Okay. You said, I apologize, you said the difficult application, and that is, is that because it is, it would have been less difficult if you would have put two homes on the 60,000 square-foot lot? Is that correct?
It's difficult because it's a D-variance, which requires a higher standard of proofs than a C-variance.
Correct. But, okay, I understand that. But would have been an easier application, is what I'm trying to ask you, if you would have put two homes on this 60,000-square-foot lot, each of 30,000 square foot, instead of 10,000 for six?
We would be required to provide proofs. It would be more a question for you to ask the board members if it's easier or more difficult, if it's a different number of units rather than me.
I'm sorry. I felt you fell out on your answer. I didn't hear it.
The proofs to do two as opposed to six would be the same. We'd still have to show that it's particularly suited. We still have to show all the same type of proofs. So whether it's more difficult or not as an application with a different number of units would be more something that the board members would opine on rather than me.
Right, but you are a licensed planner, right? You have to look at the positive and the negative criteria in an application like this for a D-variance, correct?
Yes, I did, and I presented that in my testimony.
Right. So hypothetical, if there would only have been two homes put on the 60,000-square-foot lot, your testimony would have been a little different, wouldn't it?
I don't think it would have been different, no.
So you think that the benefit, the balance test would be the same where there are six units on a lot, or there's only two units on a lot?
The testimony would be the same.
Well, but the testimony, so there would be no difference in your balance test?
You've asked me the same question, and I've answered it numerous times. The testimony would be the same because it's still a density variance.
It's a density variance. But when you have a density variance, you've got to make an assessment of how dense the application is going to be compared to if there was just built the allowable structure on the property, correct?
As a planner, when I make a density variance, I make a variance for the density that's appropriate, and I've given my opinion that I think this density is appropriate for the property for all the reasons I gave in my testimony.
Okay. So would you agree with me that that is more or less a net opinion, because it's not, you don't graduate it at all? It's either one way or no way. So that's a net opinion. Wouldn't you agree with me on that?
I don't know what you're trying to get at with the question. I think the question that you've asked me is the same, and you've changed some of the words, and I've answered it numerous times, so.
All right. Now, do you know what a net opinion is?
If you'd like to explain it to me, I'd be happy to listen.
No, no, I'm just asking what you know.
Excuse me, to the chair.
You're wasting time.
Mr. Mayor, are we getting to something, or are we just stalling? That's going to waste our whole night. Because I'm getting really aggravated with the meeting. I'm sorry. But I'm not enjoying this meeting. I'm here to serve the public, not to listen to harassment, it sounds like. I'm sorry to get frustrated, but I'm having a hard time comprehending what you're trying to get at, besides harassing Mr. Flannery.
I agree. Okay. So are you telling me I cannot cross-examine?
No, just ask the whole questions, is what I'm saying. Ask questions, get answers, and move on. That's all I'm asking. Ask all the questions you want, but make it sound like a real question.
Well, I'm sorry if you don't understand the question.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. So now, in a proposed, let me just see here. Now, I just lost my thought, my thought process here, one second. What is the standard balancing test? What is the test that you are required to show on a D-variance like this here, when there's no inherent benefit use, there's no hardship? What is the standard that you have to articulate in an application like this?
Well, a D-variance, typically there's three types of justification. One is that it's, there's a hardship, which is not what I'm indicating for this property, because we could build a school here. There's no hardship. The applicant could use the property. We could build a school, and the applicant could get a lot of money for the property from a school, and it's not going to be as nice a development, in my opinion, as what's proposed. There's also inherently beneficial. And if schools weren't permitted here, and we wanted to put a school here, then we could say it's inherently beneficial.
So that's out, too?
That's out, too. The third is promoting the public good. And it's my testimony, and we need to show special reasons, and we need to show that it's particularly suited. And it's my testimony that this is particularly suited. And the public good that's there is by developing with residential houses, that the master plan says we need residential housing. It's a transition between many different housing densities in this area. And that's my opinion, that I stated in my testimony, that it enhances the public welfare.
Okay. Now, is it the standard that you have to apply, does that require enhanced quality of proof in this matter?
Well, my job is to present testimony to indicate that it does enhance the public good, and that it is particularly suited.
No, I think that you're mixing up two things. Whether, is there a requirement here for enhanced quality of proof for the use variances?
I think I provided enhanced quality of proof.
Okay, I don't think you did. But what are the enhanced quality of proof for this particular use of a six, of breaking up a 60,000-square-feet into six lots? What is the enhanced quality of proof for this kind of use variance?
I think I gave the proof that justifies that in accordance with the requirements of the municipal land use law. You clearly don't think I gave it, but the board is the one that determines that. So maybe your argument should be presented to the board on why you think my opinion didn't satisfy it, rather than spend the whole night explaining what you feel your opinion is and trying to get me to answer the questions the way you want.
No, I'm trying to make a record here. And the reason that we have these hearings is so the, like you, as a professional and experienced planner, can probably assert the grounds for your opinion on the record. And then, I guess, it's up to me to bring in my planner and see if there's something that you missed. And that way, if there's something that you didn't testify to or you couldn't prove properly, bring that, then if the board agrees with you or my planner before court to determine.
Mr. Meyer, do you have a planner that you're ready to bring today?
I will have a planner.
No, tonight, I mean.
Not tonight.
So are you delaying us so that way we're going to throw in the towel and say, okay, you have time tomorrow? The next time? The next time, I mean?
I assume that's how planning boards, zoning board meetings are normally presented, that once the testimony is there and as an objector, we request a transcript of the meeting. We can review what, this is not what we call standing on one foot to do an application like this.
This is bothering everyone over here. This is bothering everyone over here. Now, I'm not faulting you. You dealt the hand that your client deals you, but your client called you up two days before. He's known about this application well in advance. He's known about what's going on in this property well in advance, and I fail to see why your client is not just playing a game of attrition over here, is actually trying to convince everybody on the merits. Convince us, fine, but everything that so far has been happening tonight seems to be a game of attrition.
No, there's no attrition. Nobody's trying to delay anything. We're just trying to put on proof. It's not a, listen, I've done this many, many times. I'm sure you've been sitting on the board for many, many years. There's legitimate reasons that we feel that this is being pushed through by a planner and architect or whatever they come up with, just to push it through for whatever, over the objection and over the net supply.
We're arguing every issue. Every single thing is being argued. I think we have to move on. I think everybody's expressed that opinion. We can't argue every single sentence.
But you're inhibiting and...
No, we're not. You've been given ample time, and you will get ample time at the end. Let's move.
At the end, what do I do at the end, to make a statement? You have an expert here. If you don't take, I'm okay, I'll concede. I don't need to ask any questions.
No, you're arguing constantly. Get on with the program. Stop arguing with us.
I have more questions.
You have something to say of merit, say it. You're not saying anything of merit.
Okay. Well, I guess eventually it will be for everybody to figure that out. Now, Mr. Flannery, since some of the members don't want me to go speak anymore to the D-variance, do you know the sizes of these houses that's going to be put on the property?
They would be houses that fit on a 10,000-square-foot lot, similar to many 10,000-square-foot lots in Lakewood. They would probably have a 1,500-square-foot footprint and a 3,000-square-foot house.
Okay. So are you saying that it would conform with the building coverage on the lot?
The application has submitted setbacks and bulk requirements with respect to the R10 rather than the R40, and the engineer's report indicated that the bulk variances should be dealt with at subdivision, so we're not discussing bulk variances at this time. I would anticipate that they would be bulk variances consistent with the R10 zone, which would be a 30,000-square-foot building.
Okay. And how large would the footprint then be? Do you think that if the footprint is 20%, would that be what you took into consideration when you did your balance tests?
The footprint on a 10,000-square-foot lot, if it's a 30% building coverage, could be up to 3,000 square foot. That's not typically what gets built on a lot in Lakewood. What gets built on a lot in Lakewood is... What gets built on a lot in Lakewood is fifteen hundred to two thousand square foot, which is a eight thousand plus square foot house with six bedrooms. That's what I took into account when I did the balancing test.
And that will require a lot coverage of twenty percent or thirty percent?
Between twenty and thirty.
Now, does that make a difference for your analysis, whether it's a twenty percent lot coverage or thirty percent lot coverage?
The type of house would accommodate uh a six bedroom, typical Lakewood house. Uh it would have four parking spaces uh and it would accommodate the typical Lakewood families. So no, the exact coverage does not uh influence my balancing test.
Okay. Now, you said that the uh your opinion was it was good idea to bifurcate the application. And that was the opinion of the applicant as well.
That is my opinion, yes.
And you said it was the opinion of the applicant as well, correct?
Yeah.
What do you know why that was the opinion of the applicants? Mister 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 Meyer, the applicant has a choice to bifurcate the application before us just to get a use variance. Have you been on meetings before, which I'm sure you have, you know the differences? So really, we just really wanna move on. Okay, this is just stick to the use at this point. Uh we don't get into any of the.
Why wouldn't we wanna move on instead of actually accurately discussing this uh thing over there?
Who's talking besides me and and?
People that matter.
No, people that don't matter should not be talking.
That's not true. It's a public, it's a public, it's a public meeting, sir.
Not yet. It's not a public meeting right now.
Jason, is there a way to mute everybody that's not on the board?
This is a public meeting. Where do you get that? It's a public meeting.
Frank, Fran, can you mute everybody that's not on the board?
United States of America, it's a public meeting, sir.
The public is not open at this time.
It's not open to the public.
It's not open to the public. The public got a chance to speak. It's not open to the public.
Then why is it being broadcast?
Right now, the only one that should be talking is myself, board members, and my and the attorneys, period. And the applicant, nobody else.
Mr. Zach, you'll have a chance to talk if you let the proceedings proceed.
So, Mr. Meyer, just let's stick to the the use variance at this time? So we can move on with the meeting. I have a uh I have a question. Uh the Mister Mister Flannery spoke to the issue of smart growth. Is that a term that is uh used in the municipal land use law?
Uh I I don't think that's in the municipal land use law, no.
Could you see a uh better way of granting use variance without putting six lot, six uh properties on the on the sixty thousand?
Yeah.
Would it be better that will ease the balance test?
But I we could do a different number than six. My professional opinion is that six is the appropriate.
So if what if you um so you could put three lots as well on there instead of the six, is that correct?
I I answered that question and you made your agenda perfectly clear. You're you're trying to ask questions all night.
I I I think you didn't answer my question.
I I did answer your questions, that we could do any number of lots, but my professional opinion is that six is the appropriate number.
And and I don't think you answered one question that was very important to me. That is, would it change your balance test if there were only three homes put on this sixty thousand lot? Would it be an easier application for you?
I I have answered that question.
Okay. I have no further question on this point of this. Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Snyder, can you go with your traffic engineer, Mr. Justin, please? Introduce him, his qualification, and can move on. Uh I'm sorry, Mr. Gonzalez, the other people who are on the public, they have no right to ask questions of. No, they do not. They have to wait for the application to be heard and then they can ask their questions. Okay. The public is open after the application is heard in full. Okay, I guess that's a different procedure. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. So, Mr. Snyder, can you please introduce, reintroduce the professional, Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Taylor, you were you were sworn in um a little earlier by Mr. Buckley. Could you now go through your uh professional qualifications and experience?
Uh absolutely. Uh I'm a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, as well as Pennsylvania and Texas. I'm also a certified professional traffic operations engineer by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. I'm practicing traffic planning for approximately the last twenty years. And I've testified at hundreds of boards throughout the state of New Jersey, as well as before this board in the past.
I'd ask that the board accept Mr. Taylor as an expert in traffic engineering.
Do any do any board members have any objections?
No, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Taylor, we accept your qualification. Could you please proceed?
Thank you very much. Um as part of my responsibility for this project, it was to tell you.
Anybody that's not talking, could you please mute your selves?
Um, better? Can you hear me now? Good. Um so my responsibility as part of this project was to take a look at the traffic impact that might be generated by the proposed project, as well as to compare it to um to permitted uses within the zone and to take a look at what the surrounding roadway network would be to be able to accommodate this traffic. So I we've heard testimony from uh Mr. Flannery about the location of it. Um but let's unpack that a little bit. We're talking about three streets owned by the the township of Lakewood with Spruce Street running uh east-west and a twenty-five mile an hour uh posted speed, providing residential uses in this area with the school across the street. We have Vine Avenue, which also provides a speed limit of twenty-five miles an hour and is residential in nature through the whole corridor here. And you have Washington Avenue, which provides access to um Lakewood Commons behind us and to residential uses to the north. Um, all three of those roads, as I said, are residential in nature. They're low in speed and they would typically be where we would see other residential development. We then looked uh to determine what type of traffic the proposed use could actually generate. Um typically, we would look to the transportation, uh to the Institute of Transportation Engineers publication trip generation for um for the traffic that might be generated by a residential development. However, given the type of development uh that occurs within Lakewood, Ocean County has actually developed individual residential rates for homes within Lakewood Township. And so we utilize those rates um in order to generate the traffic that would be associated with this project. Based on the Ocean County rates, a six-unit uh single-family home development would generate eight trips in the morning and twelve trips in the evening peak hour, or a car every five to seven minutes. Um, based on criteria that's set forth both by NG DOT and ITE, they state that when you were looking at an intersection, in order to determine whether it should be studied for the impact of a project, they set a threshold of one hundred new trips for the intersection. So one hundred is the threshold that you should be looking at to look at an intersection. And as I stated, we'd be generating eight and twelve. So we fall well below that threshold um and would not need to study any of the impact of the surrounding intersections based on that. We also took a look, as Mr. Flannery has alluded to, to permitted uses within the zone. Um, when we look at a school, this could be built here um based on the square footage of the uh of the lots and a ratio of one student per um or ten students per one teacher, we'd be looking at a school of upward of two hundred and forty students on this piece of property. If we were to look at the traffic that's associated with those two, we could be looking at a a new traffic of upwards of a hundred and sixty trips in a peak hour. So let's go back.
Mr. Snyder, do you have a written report on Mr. Taylor?
I do not, no. Um, so one hundred and sixty trips based on uh ITE trip generation uh in comparison to eight trips as uh the proposed project, which is a differential of a hundred and fifty-three more tra- trips in the morning that could be generated because of the school. So what that really shows is the proposed development from a traffic standpoint is much less um intense than what could be built here as of right. Um, the final thing we looked at as part of this project was access to and from the homes. And that is of concern, given the the volumes they're traveling to and from here. And so what we did in order to determine the safety operation of vehicles entering and exiting um residential developments is we requested accident data from the Police Department of Lakewood for a three-year period um along both Spruce Street and along Vine. And what was determined is over a three-year period, there were no accidents along Vine Street or um along Vine Avenue, excuse me. There was zero over that three-year period. And there were three accidents involving vehicles turning to and from driveways along uh along Spruce. So what that really shows is while there is traffic out here and while these intersections are busy, the ability for vehicles to enter and exit the driveways has shown to be safe. And that lends itself towards the ability to provide safe and efficient access uh to these proposed lots. So based upon all the analysis that we did, the proposed project is located located along residential streets. Um, the the proposed use is gonna generate minimal volumes between, you know, a car every five to seven minutes. Uh, the proposed use will generate substantially less than an actual permitted use in in this in the school use that could go on the project. And their existing residential uses are providing safe and efficient access, which can then be construed that the proposed site will uh will be able to provide safe and efficient access to the uh surrounding roadway network. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have in direct, but I I am here for for questions.
That you have, okay. Mr. Myers or Mr. Meyer, only, do you have any questions of the traffic? Yes, I just have a few, not much. Mr. Taylor, thank you. That was excellent testimony. Uh um just one thing I wanted to ask you. Now, the relevance uh that you compare the traffic study to uh putting a school on this property is only, of course, in the event that a school would be put on the property, but that was not intended, correct?
The intent was to draw a comparison between an as-of-right use and what's proposed.
Right, but you know that the um intended use was not for a school, but for six um individual homes, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so it it was just for illustration purposes, correct?
It was to draw a comparison between what could be constructed and what is proposed from a traffic impact standpoint.
Thank you. No further questions. Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Snyder, do you have any other?
I have no other witnesses. Thank you.
Okay, so now I open it to board members and board members only. Do you?
I have one question. Uh, Mr. Flannery, if you remember the prior application, which was on both of the lots, um what were the number of units uh that you had proposed on this lot before, last time around?
Uh, I'm I'm not sure. It was either five or six.
It wasn't more than six, right?
Was not more than six.
Okay, um and do you know if your client would be willing to go down by one or two lots if if the board would uh if the if my fellow board members would would say this is too dense?
I I think if the board made the decision that six was not appropriate, but five was, I I think the applicant would uh comply with the uh the opinion of the board.
What's the lot size directly across the street? What's that? Do you want to let me just finish with that? What's the lot size of the two lots that are directly across the street?
Uh, directly across the street is uh.
Directly across Vine, to be fair, to be clear, the two residential lots.
A hundred by one thirty-four and a hundred and four by one thirty-four.
So about thirteen, what's it called? About thirteen thousand square feet plus?
Yes.
So if, I don't know if it's possible, but it would be possible to kind of match those lot sizes, so it'd be more in line with what's directly across the street. Is there a way to do that?
Catty corner across the street is um uh ninety by one thirty fours uh and catty corner.
Yeah, that's a little bit further down. I'm talking about directly across cuz direct, then you have the whole Spruce Street and be more of a transition. I would think that's that's my, one of my concerns. I mean, I have other, I have other things which give me pause, but one of my concerns is you know, directly across the street, you have two larger lots that are thirteen thousand square feet. You have doubt, further down Spruce, much larger lots. Uh and I understand where you're coming from. Yes, you could also look r- right in the backyard and say there are tiny lots over there in uh, you know, in Lakewood Commons, but what I don't think, I don't think that's a right, I don't think it's a proper comparison. There are some larger lots further down, lot seven also uh off the bottom of the map over there is uh one thirty-three by ninety. Uh that, I don't know, you know, the math is not, I'm not even able to do the quick math in it, but it does seem a little bit bigger than your um ten thousand square feet.
If it was five lots, it's roughly a sixty-five thousand square foot lot. So if five lots would be close to thirteen thousand square foot lots, which would be similar with the lots across the street.
Does that answer your questions?
That answers my question.
Does any other board members have any questions for the applicant professionals?
Yes.
Please.
Uh, Brian, uh following up with Mr. Gross's question, the house directly across the street was how wide? Uh the one to the south is a hundred feet uh deep and a hundred and thirty. Uh, the one to the north is a hundred and four deep and a hundred and thirty-four. Okay, and uh um those zones are what, R twelves? Yes. Okay, and uh your lots, let's say, if you would do them ten uh at, if you would do them at uh ten thousand square feet, what would be the ballpark figure of the size of the lots? They're they're a hundred foot depths and uh the on the map that was submitted, they uh range from a hundred and five to a hundred and fifteen wide. Okay, so there's about a ten uh ten to twenty foot difference between what's across the street? Yeah. In the width? And if you would, and if you would do it twelve thousand square feet, would it look like the lots across the street?
But my opinion is it's gonna look pretty similar to the lots across the street at a hundred. Uh, to do five lots, um we would have to uh uh do something with the depths of the lot. Some of the lots, different depths, in order to do uh three lots along one frontage and two lots along another.
Okay, and what's happening with the other lot? Uh, the 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 other sixty thousand square foot lot that you used, that you came up with last time, that you're not applying for this time?
Nothing's happening happening with it at this point. It's remaining vacant.
It's remaining vacant? It's not part of this application, not being developed?
It is not part of this application.
So uh this is a new number? You put up a new number?
Yes, this is a completely new application.
Okay.
And again, we're only asking for the density variance, so that if the 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 board decided on, you know, it the density that we asked for for six lots is too much and and they went for five, we would have to come back with a plan to show uh a subdivision plan for the five lots.
Uh, from what I recall from the last application, which is not the same as this application, uh but it's it it the last time uh this was in this area, it was the other lot that was all the controversy, it was, from what I recall. Is that right?
Well, I, yeah, yes, the the uh the last application in this vicinity, uh the neighbors from uh east on Spruce Street uh came out and and they were very protective of their neighborhood. Uh, uh so the the lot that's no longer part of this application is one that's actually in their neighborhood if you divide their neighborhood off by the Washington Avenue uh crossing. Uh and 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 there are no other lots uh west of Washington Avenue that are similar to those luxury lots to the east on Spruce Street. Directly across the street from this property, uh. Directly across the street from this property on Washington Avenue is a property owned by Base Kayla, and then everything further to the west are R12-type lots.
Okay, the street going up into the affordable housing is called Washington Street?
Yes, Washington Avenue.
So this might be a legal question, but we've done this in the past, where we have said that anything, anything to the, to the, I guess, to the left, the picture I'm looking at, give me north, southeast, which way is it, Brian?
To the left would be, to the left would be west. Vine Avenue is west.
No, I'm sorry. Then it would be everything towards the luxury lots.
That would be east.
Okay. You know, we've created like a line in, on the map and said in the past that anything, anybody coming with a, anything less than thirty thousand square feet in this area would, you know, would probably be turned down. We're looking at this Washington Street, to the right would, you know, from the picture that I'm looking at, to the, to the right would be a single-family standard Lakewood-type homes, ten, twelve, whatever it might be. And then to the left, we would make it a line in the sand, that it has to be luxury, something big, luxuries, like thirty thousand square feet to match the neighbors, like Mr. Davis, Mr. Zacks, and all those, Mr. Shapiro, that have those big lots, and some way to make this contested fight go away between quality neighbors.
I certainly understand, and in Lakewood, the board is very aware of the neighborhoods and what makes sense for the neighborhoods, so I understand that logic. That would be my suggestion, I'm not sure if anybody else on the board would agree, but I'm putting it out there.
Okay, Marsh, did you finish your questioning?
To the chair.
Yes, please.
Okay, it's Judah. If everybody could please turn off their mics. So I think one of the things that came up in the last meeting when this, the other part of the application was brought up, was that when the new plans were developed for Lakewood, this was one area that was lobbied to have changed to a different zone and it was not. So kind of like you're coming now to the zoning board to do something that the town elders just did, and planners, I think, Brian, I think you were involved in that, did not want to do. So, and I also believe that this particular piece had five units on it and not six. And one of the discussions that we had was that we didn't want to see anything less than a minimum of fifteen thousand square feet for these lands. And I guess my question is that with basements coming in, we know that there's going to be basements, certainly, Brian, you have to admit that there's less impact from a density standpoint when there would be, say, four homes on this, on this particular property, which is really eight families and less cars with the amount of traffic that there is. I mean, so what would be the upside of saying that we should have six homes with more density and more traffic as opposed to four? That's my question.
Well, you started off with discussing the master plan for, for that whole area, which this is really a tiny part of, which isn't connected to that. And the master plan recommendation in that area was for R7.5, which was a major change. I, you said I was involved in the master plan, I testified to the master plan committees, I had no formal involvement in that, but I did see a lot of what was going on, and there were a lot of political decisions that were made. So I don't think it's a matter of, we asked for R7.5, we didn't get it, and now we're coming back. It was a recommendation for this area, the recommendation wasn't acted on favorably, it wasn't included. So now we're here, as with any application to the zoning board, saying we're focusing on this one particular lot. And, and yes, less units is less intensity, but the permitted uses that are permitted on this lot are one single-family home or schools. And the intensity of a school, and everybody in Lakewood knows it, because everybody has a school that was built near them, it was one of the reasons I moved out of Lakewood, is because there were schools built near me and the traffic was horrendous, and I had the availability of not needing the Lakewood infrastructure, so I moved five miles away to Jackson. In Lakewood, the, there's benefits to Lakewood with the infrastructure that's available, and one of the drawbacks to that is traffic. So you heard the testimony of the traffic engineer, who said the, the impact from the few additional lots, in the scheme of things, and compared to a school, is not going to make a tangible difference.
And I, I agree that a school would be an enormous burden on the area, but I don't think that's an argument for allowing more density for housing. It's not that you're giving us a choice either or. Right now, the application is, should you have, should you be able to have R7.5 here, and whether a school is allowed to be there or not, I don't believe is an argument.
We're not asking for R7.5, we're asking for R10.
I'm sorry, R10, I apologize.
And, and, and that's the decision for the board to make, and we presented the development potential for this property, per the zoning, and my opinion of what makes sense for the property.
Thank you.
Any other board members who would like to speak, will be heard? Okay, hearing none, there's going to be a rule for the public to be heard, to give the public a fair chance, if you're listening. Each public portion could be heard, but it'll be four minutes, and I'll be timing the four minutes, so you can have any questions that you may have. Well, use one public member at a time, introduce yourself, give us your address and name slowly, so that way we can do one at a time.
Zacks?
Mr. Zacks, go ahead.
Yeah, two sixty-Spruce Street, Lakewood. I think this is a little bit, this, this genuine, I would call this. This application, or rather, this developer came into this board, asked for ten thousand square foot lots on two sides of Washington Street. The board threw him down, told him no chickens. Now he takes one lot, he says, okay, I'm taking out one lot, coming back for another ten thousand, where the board told him already, goodbye, good luck, this is not what we need here. This is an R40 zone, which is, is a conforming lot. There's nothing, there's no hardship here, right? Zero hardship. On this, you find this lot, there is the affordable, where the township committee laid a special zone for affordable housing. The only other real density factor is down by the east housing, part of a village, where the township, again, went along and made specific zone four. So we're in an R40 zone, it's a conforming lot, right? There is zero hardship here. In fact, developing more than one lot is going to be a hardship for the neighbors themselves. You have four hundred and fifty families driving by this lot, coming out of the affordable housing. Now, this applicant came before, this, this board itself said, hey, this doesn't make sense at all. Now, if you come to me and you tell me, hey, on this lot, it's an R40 zone, and it's a R20 cluster, and even though I'm not in a cluster, but you know what, it might be a hardship, a lot of traffic around, put down three houses, like an R20 on these, and get three, three lots out of this, that make, make, might make sense. Ten thousand, an R10 versus an R40? That's ludicrous. You know, this, we've been in front of this board already three times, the board got, this applicant got knocked down twice, once he pulled the application. This board already has spoken to him many times and told him that it does not make sense at all with this type of density. I mean, you're talking about from the most dangerous corners in Lakewood, you're coming down off a hill onto Spruce Street from Vine, you're coming out of affordable housing, where you have four hundred and fifty families going north into town every single morning, every single afternoon? I mean, this is traffic central, and I'm not sure where exactly our traffic, I don't know if he ever showed up to the side, whoever, whoever did that traffic study, but my son personally was hit on a motorbike on one of the bicycles coming off, off Vine Street. There were multiple accidents there, basically every two days, and I think what he said was, oh, on the corner of Vine, there wasn't any accidents. Did you ever study the corner of Washington and Spruce Street? You know how many people run through that stop sign and cause accidents every single day? I mean, this is like beyond, that he has the audacity to come to the board and ask for an R10. Where, where potentially, where should be, if anything, it's a conforming lot, he claims he has some sort of hardship, go to the 20 cluster, give him three lots if that's the case, but nothing more than that. That's my testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Zacks, we really appreciate it. Anyone else from the board, from the public like to be heard?
Yes.
Please introduce yourself.
Abby Hirsch, 501 Spruce Street.
Please go ahead, Mr. Hirsch.
Okay, just a couple of quick points, and I know I'm on a, I'm on a four-minute timer, and I honestly think there's, that's not nearly enough time to say everything that needs to be said about some of the ridiculous assumptions that were made in, that, you know, that were made in the testimony, but I'm going to start with the fact that the applicants, the applicant pushing so hard not to push this off for four weeks, gives you a pretty good sense of the fact that the applicant is very well aware that if we'd have the ability to bring our professionals, then there would and could very strongly be a different outcome. He's owned these lots for many, 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 many years, I have a hard time believing that four more weeks is going to make a big difference. The only reason he's pushing back and, as to not to adjourn till next time is only because he completely appreciates that giving us the ability to come fully prepared would be very detrimental to his case. And I think everyone on the board realizes that and understands that. We keep throwing around the school thing, and I have a question for the board. Shouldn't we just throw out our zoning book for the town of Lakewood? I mean, residential, a school is in approved use in every zone in Lakewood. So using the thinking that I heard over and over again, well, we could put a school there, so you should give us whatever we're asking for, we might as well throw out, we have much better use for the paper it's printed on. The, 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 the argument is so ludicrous, I cannot believe that the board actually listened to that. And I do appreciate those board members that did push back on that, because it's essentially crossing out and redacting all zoning law in the township of Lakewood, because there is a possibility for doing a school there. Brian's assertion that the mass, you know, that this is a beneficial use because of the master plan, you know, one of the points that I was going to make has already been made by one of the board members, which is that the master plan actually looked at this site and decided that it should remain in R40. So if we're looking to the master plan, we should probably look to what the master plan decided to do for the site, which is keep it in R40. Additionally, the master plan, I think somebody mentioned, was in 2017. I think everyone that's familiar with Lakewood can very well appreciate that life has changed dramatically in Lakewood. The average person in Lakewood today that's looking for a house is not looking in Lakewood, they're looking in Toms River, and they're looking in Jackson specifically, because what's available in Toms, in Lakewood are R10 lots shoehorned in inappropriate places. The only people that are buying these lots, if you'll, if you'll take the time to drive through the Oak and Vine Development, you will see fifty to sixty percent of the license plates are New York license plates. So in essence, we're, we're cannibalizing a neighborhood so that people from New York can escape the urban grime and come to us, and I know everyone can appreciate, that makes no sense. And lastly, as far as this lot being a reapplication of a previous application, I think it would be much, I think by splitting a lot, an application in half, does not mean it's a changed application, it would be a simple change for anybody who hasn't had an application that was, that was denied, to split the application in half and come back in for only half of the application. Obviously, if the application would be for both lots, on both sides of Spruce Street, and, and leaving the other side, I'm sorry, of Washington Street, leaving the other side of Washington as-is, then there would be conversation. But the applicant is not saying that, they're not giving us any indication as to what they plan on doing on the other side of Washington. For all we know, we will be back here in six months from now, fighting the same application for the same density on the other side of Washington. In essence, they will have applied for the exact same density, except split the application in half. That's unfair, that we need to come fight the same application over and over and over again. I appreciate the board member's time, I understand this has been a long process, we very much appreciate the board members spending the time, listening to our concerns, and we really, really hope to do the right thing here, protect our neighborhood. I think the neighbors have had a chance to talk a little bit today, and I think, like other, you know, neighbors already I've mentioned, we would be open to a conversation for some level of downzoning on the other side of Washington Street. I think we can all agree, and we'd like the opportunity to have that application in the context of what happens on both sides of Washington Street. And I think the board wants us to go there, the board has in the past told us to go there, we'd be open to hang that up, that, that, that conversation again, and we look forward to that. I think tonight, it's an inopportune time to vote on the application. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hirsch. Anybody else from the public would like to be heard on this application? Please state your name and come forward.
Abraham Zacks, 540 Spruce Street, Lakewood, New Jersey.
Go ahead, Mr. Zacks.
Honestly, I really cannot add anything more than my dear brother Elliot, or my dear neighbor, Abby Hirsch, just stated to you. They basically shredded the other side's points from beginning to end. I just would like to reiterate, and it's laughable that we're having this conversation among, I'm assuming, a lot of intelligent people over here, that we keep on bringing up this foolish point of bringing a school into residential Lakewood, just because you could theoretically, legally, put a strip joint next to a synagogue, no zoning board in the United States of America would allow that, just like we don't allow a strip joint, for example, this is an example, next to an elementary school. So it's great that in theory we could do something, but that doesn't give you those rights. And we've been repeating this for, I don't know, up to three, four years, the same dumb, unintelligent argument, and Mr. Flannery, I don't know what he's thinking, and it's not personal against him, you know, I guess he has a job, they pay him to spew this garbage, but this is not about a school. This is about a neighborhood, with a lot of families that spent a lot of money and a lot of time and a lot of sweat and a lot of little kids to build a neighborhood. And here we have one greedy person coming in and trying to ruin our quality of life.
Obi, can you hear me? Obi on mute? Okay, okay.
I can hear you.
We have one greedy individual who is coming in and trying to ruin our quality of life. He's ruining our quality of life, he's stealing financial from us for frankly, no good reason whatsoever, besides for the, he'd like to make money off the neighborhood that we built. And to that is obviously not a hardship, to go ahead and give him even frankly, one inch. Just like no legal ramification, no legal reason, no intelligent reason to allow this atrocity to continue. And frankly, you guys shouldn't even have this conversation, you should tell them, you know, you're way above your line, it's frankly, very disrespectful to the boards, to the neighborhood, and anyone in this whole scenario to even be having this conversation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Zacks. Anybody else from the board, from the public want to be heard? Please speak up and introduce yourself. Hearing none, and I close it to the public. Mr. Schneider?
One minute, Obi, you have people here, hold on.
Okay.
If the public that wants to speak, you have to hit star three. Let me make sure that's correct, one second. Star three, and you may speak. Is there anybody there with star three?
I don't see anybody, Friday.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, then now it's closed to the public. Mr. Schneider, can you please give us your closing arguments?
Yes, thank you. I agree, this is not about the school.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gonzalez.
It's not his turn to speak, I'm going to mute him.
Well, Mr., I, I, can I say something?
Mr. Myers, you have to wait to be called, you've already been spoken, Obi.
Mr. Myers?
I have a...
I've been told to mute, not to, that should not be speaking now.
I am an attorney, I am...
Mr. Myers, let Mr. Schneider speak first, you get your chance to speak. Mr. Schneider, please continue.
Thank you. I certainly agree that this is not about the school. The application isn't for a school. The application isn't for a school, and that's not what's before the board. I do think the comparison is useful. And contrary to what one of the members of the public said, one could put a school there as a matter of right. It wouldn't be before this board, it would be before the planning board. It would be as a matter of right, but it's not about the school. But the comparison is nonetheless useful. With regard to the other lot, I can state unequivocally, and it could be in the resolution, that Mr. Goodfriend, who was the principal of 118 Ocean, neither he nor any entity he controls will be coming back before this board for, on any application involving the lot to the east of Washington. Mr. Goodfriend has, is in the process of conveying his controlling interest in that lot. So it's not a question of let's split something in half. You'll never hear from Mr. Goodfriend with regard to the lot to the east of Washington. Mr. Flannery gave very compelling testimony why, for this particular lot, in this particular location, with its particular surroundings and characteristics, and the way the neighborhood is built out, that residential development at the 10,000 square foot approximately, the R10 density, is an appropriate use. And, you know, if the board felt that it was going to grant approval for five lots in the 12,000 square foot density zone, my client would live with that. Traffic. The traffic's bad today. The question is, is this going to have any measurable impact? And the answer is no. Not just in comparison with the school, but is it going to have any measurable impact whether you have one house there, or five houses there, or six houses there? And the answer is no. So I would respectfully request that the board grant this application, and in doing so, we recognize that when you go for a bifurcated application under the MLUL, when we come back before the board, the board has, once again, not just the opportunity, but the obligation to determine whether the particular subdivision plan we're going, we're applying for, can be granted without substantial harm to the public good. It doesn't make it quite like an as-of-right planning board application, but NJSA 4055D-76, the board in the subsequent application would have to find that the site plan could be approved without substantial detriment to the public good, without substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the ordinance. So we're not, in essence, we're going a broad range of board review by going for a bifurcated application. To the contrary, it gives the board to, an opportunity to look at the issues yet again the second time around. So I would respectfully request that the application be granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Mr. Myers, is your time, please?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to get an, and that was what I was asking for before, again, an understanding whether there's going to be a vote tonight by the members of the board, or they are going to close the hearing, or are they going to afford, my client, maybe with your kind indulgence, the opportunity. There's some background noise here. The opportunity to allow my client to, his expert, to listen in to the testimony, Muslim, Mr. Flannery, and the other, and the traffic expert if necessary, as well as the comments made by the public, in order to bring forth the legal basis and articulate as a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, why we believe this is not appropriate under the municipal land use law to drastically change a 40,000 square foot requirement to a 10,000 foot requirement. In other words, if the, and of course, my point, and that's the question. The question is whether or not I'll be afforded the opportunity to have a professional planner testify before this board in order to persuade and give you municipal land use reasoning and the balance test, which in this case, even though Mr. Flannery has appeared many times before this board, I don't think that in-depth analysis of the balance test was presented in that way that you can change the 40,000 requirement per lot into a 10,000 requirement or whatever you decide, a 50,000, whatever you will decide to do.
Mr. Myers, there's been no motion before the board yet, so they haven't made that decision. So I think what you're doing is trying to set a decision out of the board before a motion is on the table. So I'm going to direct the board to wait to answer that question until a motion is before the board.
Well, I'm appealing, Mr. Buckley, I'm appealing to the board not to make a decision, not to move on this application until I have had an opportunity to bring my expert before the board to testify.
I think the board understands your position. You made it very clear to your credit, so I think we can move on.
Okay. So are you, because if I don't have, and in conjunction with that, if I don't have to make closing arguments, then I'll reserve until my expert has been testifying.
You better make the closing.
I would recommend that you put in your argument, this way it gives the chance for the board to decide exactly what they're going to do, Mr. Myers, and give you an opportunity to have a closing argument.
But I think it closes my, well, with a reservation of rights. I don't think it's appropriate, and I don't get a benefit of my expert, the applicant had benefit of their expert. But in any event, here is the way I see it. If the legislation, if the legislators, the town council, the proper elected officials who set forth, together with the planning board, the way the planning and the zoning grid looks, did not change the R40 zone in this matter here. And that is the key. It is a variance, that is a dramatic variance, between bringing a lot size down from 40,000 to the applicant's wish to have it for 10,000. And I certainly, based upon the balance test under municipal land use law, and even though Mr. Schneider is a very good attorney, has been practicing, I'm sure, many years in the land, in field of land use, cases he cited, I think is inappropriate under this for purpose of res judicata, as he said before, so I renew that issue. And also the fact that the planner did not properly utilize the balance test the way it's supposed to. He didn't outweigh the way the municipal land use is requiring under the case law. And I think that this matter should be decided, or maybe as a, delayed until I get an opportunity to bring my witness, and/or maybe the parties can see if they can come to some kind of solution. I think Mr. Gross, in his wisdom and experience, maybe thought that could be a compromise between the parties. Thank you. Thank you for listening to me, and thank you for allowing me to before the board tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Myers. My question is to Mr. Buckley. You heard Mr. Myers objections or his concerns. Before I go to my board members, I'd like to see, hear from you, what would be your, you know, what would be your recommendation if we can go forward? Or should we have to hear the, to try to help Mr. Myers or hear the objectives, information before we actually go vote on this issue?
Mr. Chairman, I believe the matter can move forward. It was properly noticed under the municipal land use law, as Mr. Schneider has indicated, and I believe Mr. Meyer has conceded to. And in my opinion, the application is substantially different enough in order to overcome any issue of res judicata. So I think it can move forward, but as always, it is in the board's prerogative. If they feel that they want to hear testimony from more people than we have already heard tonight, then they can act accordingly by way of motion and second and a vote. But it is my legal opinion that there's been substantial proofs to allow this to move forward.
Okay, thank you very much. My fellow board members, you've heard the objectives, you've heard the concerns, you've heard the attorneys, and I hopefully to hear from you to see what your recommendations are. Can we move forward with this? Should we?
Obi, can I just make a comment?
Yeah, please, Marty, go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, Moshe, I know you wanted to say something. I see you jumped out. I personally, I'm not going to even go back with the history of the res judicata or any other issues over here. Not, I don't think anything has changed. If they would have came to us with an application and said, here are the two, here are the two pieces of property, on the, on the western one, we want to build six, and on the eastern one, we don't want to change anything, and that's one thing, but they didn't, they split it up. So history, reasons why I'm not, I'm looking at what's in front of us. The same things, the same issues we had before, I still see over here today. This, it doesn't belong, six properties do not belong here. Maybe four do, but not six. That's just my opinion. If you want to ask for relief, don't ask for so much. It's an R40 zone. Asking for us to go from R40 down to an R10, I think it's just too much, just doesn't fit the neighborhood, and that is my opinion. So if, if Mr. Flannery, you could tell us if they're willing to move to four units over there, and then I would be willing to make a motion to prove that, but the application before us is as it is right now, I am, I'm going to say I'm against it.
Okay, Mr. Gross. Any other board members? Marty, you want to say something?
Mr. Gross proposed something interesting. I was going to propose something a little bit different. I would like to consider this meeting closed. I would love a way that the two sides should again go speak. Maybe we should poll the board. I think single families do fit in this location. I would like some more information about the other lot, the one on the Spruce side. It's not part of this application, but if there was a way that we can make sure that that doesn't get into anything less than 30,000 square feet, then I would have easier time turning the other one facing, help me with the street, what was that other street? The other side?
Washington Vine.
Washington Vine, to turn that into single family, that makes sense. 10 is a little bit small, 12, 15, you know, something to that effect. But I don't know how the other board members feel. I would be up to their discretion if Mr. Meyer would agree that, to have them all sit in a room, the applicant, and maybe not Mr. Avram Zax, maybe with just Mr. Elliot and some of the other members, they might be able to work something out. Let him sit with Elliot, Mr. Hirsch.
Thanks, Marty, I love you too.
Thank you, Marty. No more pizza for you.
We're available whenever he wants. We're here. We're not running away from him.
Mr. Gonzalez, it's Mr. Hirsch, and I understand you're the chairman of the board, and I understand, I understand the public portion is closed. I have one quick point, a really, really quick point.
Three other points, please.
One really quick point, Mr. Gonzalez.
Obi? Public is closed.
Obi, I would like.
Judah, can I say something?
Judah, go ahead, Judah.
Yeah, I'm kind of in between Mr. Gross and Mr. Pizza. In my view, this application has come to the board several times. We've made our views very clear to them that it's too dense for this particular property. I am against this property. I'm willing to let this thing roll, let it go for a vote. If it gets turned down, they can always get together later on and sit and talk all they want. I just don't see this type of density on this particular piece of property.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to say something. I think the thought of reducing it to 15, like Marty, is a positive solution, and it brings it to an end.
Mayor Gelli?
Yeah, I think maybe we can have a minute to hear from Mr. Schneider, if that's acceptable, for R14, R15, four lots.
Mr. Schneider?
Could you give me just a moment to communicate with my client?
Sure.
Mr. Gonzalez, in the interim, it's Mr. Hirsch. I have a really quick point, and I'm hoping you'll make an exception just for me to make a quick point.
The public, I'm sorry.
Just the public? I'm sorry, it's closed to the public.
Public.
Want to say one thing?
It's closed.
It's closed to the public, sorry.
Where is that? Where is he? I want to mute him. I can't find him.
I don't know who it is, Franny.
Franny, he's muted.
Okay, thank you.
Forgot it, Fran.
Mr. Hirsch has a reputation of behaving.
It's you who we're concerned about.
Always.
I'm glad you took your hat off.
Are we waiting for a vote?
Yeah. We're not waiting for a vote.
We're waiting for Mr. Schneider to find out if he'll go down to four lots instead of six. What about three lots?
He would consider.
What about three lots? Well, he could, if he goes down to four lots, we'll vote on it. If that doesn't work, then it'll come back next month with three lots.
You can vote anyway, you need to vote, we got this.
Right, we're going to hold the vote.
Let's see what the motion could be.
Tick tock, tick tock.
The next meeting, Mr. Chairman?
If there are five votes for four lots, we'll live with it.
Sorry, did you say that again?
I said if there are five votes for four lots, we can live with it. For four.
So the board members, so you'll let, you know, they're willing to go to four lots, which is an R15 on this side. Now, Mr. Schneider, before we vote, you made something clear in your closing argument that they had no intention. that they had no intentions of doing anything on that western side, on the eastern side of the property. And I just want to confirm that that is still going to hold if this board votes uh, to have R fifteen on one side.
Mr. Goodfriend doesn't control that lot. So yes, Mr. Goodfriend is going to come back. But I, I, I think also before we I, I'd be interested.
Can everybody mute themselves? He can speak?
I'd be interested in knowing what the neighbors think. Or are we resolving thing or are we just kicking it to the courts?
We're going to vote, we're going to vote based on what the board agrees.
So if you'd like, we're going to take a motion right now and vote on that motion.
Obi?
Is that an option?
Obi, it's Judah.
Is it an option that we let them go back out now and discuss?
Judah, you going to make a motion?
No, I want, I have a question.
Oh, what else?
I believe that if they're changing it to four lots, do they not have to come back with a new plan?
Well, my, my only question of this finish, Judah, just to bifurcate it. Even if we gave them the, the permission, we still don't have to give them the amount of lots. All right, so we can determine at this time, the lots not just.
I think that the, the, the past agreement was that anytime there's a change that, you know, there's no such thing as we, we making a plan for them. If they're going to come back for, they have to come back and show us what it's going to look like. And then we can vote on it. That's what I believe was the original agreement back in eighteen.
Judah, can I just point out that they don't have to come back? All that, we see the lot and they're staying divided by four. They're not, these lot lots were never even, were proposed. I mean, obviously you can't fit it any other way, but that was what the point of the bifurcation. They're going to come back to us with another plan of what the actual lots are going to be. Am I correct, Obi, everybody?
Yes. Yes, you're correct, Morty. They got to come back just with four lots at R fifteen.
Great, I'm finally getting a hang of this stuff.
May I just ask a question?
You need a motion?
We need a motion.
Wait, Mr. Meyer wants to ask a question.
No, we need a motion.
Make the motion. I'll make the motion. We approve this to be uh, fifteen hundred square, fifteen.
To let Mr. Mayor talk.
Mr. Halverson that made the motion?
Mr. Halverson make the motion.
For four lots.
The motion?
R fifteen.
Four lots on sixty thousand square feet?
That's correct.
And they come back for site?
That's correct.
Return for site.
Okay. Can we get a second on the motion?
Of the eastern lot.
I'm sorry, what was that? We're holding a court game.
Can I, can I just get a clarity first, Hal?
Somebody's got to go on mute. I can't hear.
Fran, Fran, I need, I need clarity. I, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Uh, go ahead.
Before I vote on this, um, just to be clear. Mr. Schneider said that, that as part of the motion that we make is the resolution that it is agreed upon that never will, the other side, uh, will Mr. Um,
I don't know if you could do that. Can you do that? I don't know.
Isn't that what he brought?
Part of this application.
Yes, and, and that was the clarification I wanted to discuss.
Mr. Schneider brought that in.
Yes, that's not part of, not part of this application. I don't know if they can include that lot.
That's correct, Fran. You can't make a stipulation.
Mr. Halverson, for four lots on sixty thousand square feet, then they will come back for site. Need a second.
Could, could, could I, could I just address that question? We're going to stipulate.
Mr. Motion, Obi.
Stipulating a lot to someone else.
Can I get a second on the motion?
I'll make a second, Rushenberg.
Who says?
Rushenberg.
Rushenberg seconded.
Noises, I can't hear.
Fran, roll call, please.
Yes, I'm trying. Okay.
Can I clarify something that was said before?
No, no, it's closed.
It has to be heard before the motion. About the sale of the lot across the street. That's going to be sold to someone else. That's what Mr. Schneider meant.
Mr. Gelli?
Come back then and deal with it.
Mr. Gelli?
That's not on the application. We're voting on the motion, please.
Mr. Langley?
He just texted me, he's frozen. Frozen pizza.
Okay, Mr. Naftali's not there. Mr. Vivia? Mr. Vivia?
He's on mute.
He's saying yes.
No, I didn't say yes. I say no.
You said no. You said no, Mr. Vivia?
I said no.
Okay, Mr. Ingber?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five. Um, I didn't get Mr. And one no. One, two, three, four, five, and one no. We're good. The use variance.
So you're trying to go four lots?
Did I do that right?
Yes.
Okay.
But I didn't hear, uh, is Mr. Naftali not here anymore?
He left.
Naftali's not here and I don't see.
Okay. And yes, you're correct.
We have five affirmative, Mr. Gelli, Mr. Halverson, one, two. Mr. Ingber, Mr. Gross, Mr. Gonzalez, affirmative. Mr. Vivia, no.
Yes.
Five affirmative, one no. That's a bar, that's approved.
Correct.
Proof for four lots.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we want to take a two-minute break so we can keep forward and hopefully the chairman will take a break.
Thank you everyone for participating tonight. Thank you very much.
Let me wish you good luck. Because you know, you can't vote on that one.
I would like to add, our Steve Sam, uh, chairperson showed up.
Hello, everyone.
She my chair to the chairperson.
I left the fun for you guys. I left the fun for Obi. Obi did a good job. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
He did that on purpose.
Oh, I did it on purpose? I wanted Obi to have the fun. I didn't want the fun. Right? Hal, how about you? You want to chair the meeting like that?
I can't hear you.
I said, do you want to chair a meeting like that?
I still can't hear you.
You can't hear me. I hear you. All right. All right, who do we waiting for? Okay, um, just a quick announcement, whoever does not need to, who's not on the next applications to please, um, remove themselves from this meeting. So we can release some of the bandwidth for others that need to come on.
I'm on.
You're on? Okay, who else?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, you're back.
I am back. Who is that?
I would have said guess, but I'll let you see.
My Shingbo is on.
My, oh, there you are.
It was Morty also.
Yeah. Okay, I am back.
Marsh, we can see your bowl of chips over there.
We're getting a real show today.
Well, if, if Franny's not going to feed us, we got to feed ourselves.
I'm eating ice cream now, but you can't see me.
Yeah, oh, you got it all over your screen because all I can see is brown.
Okay, Mayor, are you on?
Yep.
Okay, um, do we have a quorum? One, two, three, four, five, six.
More pizza. Where Mr. Pizza?
Where Mr. Pizza?
Judah, keep your camera still. It's making me dizzy.
Okay. Mr. Pizza? Let me see if he sent me a text message or something, but he's not coming on.
One, two.
We have five.
Four, five.
We only have a, we only have a quarter of Judah.
Two, three, four.
It's better that way.
You're still missing. My Shingbo, are you there? My Shingbo? We need, we need Ingber and Langley.
But my Shingbo was here. He was just, um.
I'm here, I'm here. I just muted my video. I'm here.
I just shamed him into stopping his video because he was eating chips on video, you know?
Actually, don't give my secrets away. The break was too short.
Let me call Mike.
Four, five. We have five now.
Fran, are we beginning with, uh, four, one, five, five?
I don't know. That's up to the chairman.
Okay. What is that? What was the question?
Are we moving on to four, one, five, five, the P O number?
Yeah.
Okay.
Kevin, I'm logged on now. I got locked out.
You got locked out? Uh, who locked you out?
I don't know if I'm locked out, but a, uh, a middle-aged thing got it frozen. I can't get on again.
So restart your computer.
It's my Shingbo.
We logged on, logged off.
My, my Shingbo.
And you're the sixth.
Wait, what, what is my, what does my see? He sees a spinning?
One second, Marsh, give me a second.
It happened to me as well. I, and then it started logging me on to an old meeting link. Try to find this meeting link and do it again. And then it, and then it, uh, for some reason, it took me back to the last meeting link and that's why it was showing me that.
Or hold on, let me ask, Jason, um, IT guy, are you on? Jason from IT? Anyone else at IT? Listening in?
I'm here.
Hi, Mo, Mo Langley was locked out. He can't log back in. Can you help him out?
There's no lock on Webex. Uh, is he on a computer?
Am I locked out from there and or is mine?
He's on his computer and he can't log back in.
He tried rebooting his computer?
Yes, he tried rebooting, yes.
Marsh, what'd you do to get banned from Webex?
There's no like lockout button, so I'm not sure how he's locked out.
Marsh, can you go back to your invitation from today's meeting and hit the join button again?
Abe? I had, I, I could not log on my computer at all. I'm using my phone.
I hear you.
I tried a few times. I rebooted it. It just wouldn't work.
Mayor, you got to be careful in the picture you have. There's some people in the background over there that you don't want to show on the camera.
Fred, Fred, I never got copies of this application's paperwork. Is that what?
Wait, wait, wait. Morty, give me a minute. Morty, give me a minute.
Sure.
Are you on, Mo?
Yeah, I'm on. Let me see if the video is on.
Ah.
Okay.
Okay, okay, Mo's there. Thank you. Okay, um, um, we have a quorum. Everyone's on. We got six members.
What, what happened in the last application?
Obi, I didn't hear you. Obi, you're mute.
I'm here, I'm sorry, I'm here.
Okay.
I apologize.
Let's see, how many members do we have over here? Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, perfect.
Second members.
Okay, we got seven members, um, welcome everyone, I'm back on to this meeting for the, for the rest of the evening. We're gonna move forward with appeal number four one five, Perel Keller. Um, Morty Gross, you want to say something about this?
Yes, I wanted to know if Fred was able to email me the documents they would ever send to me.
Franny?
I don't need to go with you to go with this.
Franny? Fran?
She's eating her ice cream.
She's eating her ice cream. I haven't, I don't see her on the screen, hold on, where is she on the screen?
She's not, she's getting a refill.
Hold on, we can't move forward if Franny's not on. Let me call her.
Uh, Mysh bumped her off.
Ah.
And Mo Pizza, you're bumping people off again?
Now you can't get on. So restart your computer, go back in and hit the join button again. Restart your computer. Yeah, you're not on here, I don't see you. Or hit the join button, see if you hit the join button, or maybe your internet connection got disconnected?
Ask if she paid the bill.
You must not, we must have not paid your, your, your IT bill, so you got disconnected. Amanda, can you call, um, Fran, and get her back on?
Her computer's offline, she's not connected to the internet.
Uh, you're not connected to the internet. Can you check your IT, your internet? What happened?
Why do you laugh like that?
Mysh is laughing. Tim, three minutes, I'm sorry, fifteen minutes to get on, and so far...
Well, Mayor flew to Florida or Hawaii during our break. But he doesn't realize who's behind him in the picture. You know, and the Cabano.
I think, I think he may realize it.
The only guy with a suit and tie is sitting by the beach. I trumped.
I think it's, I think, I think, um...
You only, you only see him from the waist up.
Amanda, are you on the phone with, with, um, with, um, Franny?
Babe, the heck with the applicant, applicants, let's just schmooze.
Franny? Hold on.
We got a backstab.
She don't give the phone to me, she got jealous at you, Mayor. Now you went to the restaurant, I hear you.
I'm going back to the hotel, you guys are taking too long.
Hey, are you on and out? What's this, Morty, Franny? Check your internet, your internet is disconnected.
You're comical, Mayor.
Are you, where are you? Are you in the office?
I'm in the hotel.
Okay, Ama- uh, Amanda, can you help, um, Amanda?
Yeah, I can hear you, I'm trying to get in contact with her.
Alright, let me, I'm on the phone with her, let me hang up and please call her, okay? Come in, where? She's in your house? Can you log into her computer? Amanda, is she online? Is your internet working? Amanda?
No, she's not connected to the internet, I can't log into her computer.
Okay, Franny, you're not connected to the internet, wait, Franny, Franny, you're not connected to the internet, she can't log on. She can't, if you're not connected to the internet, she cannot log on to your computer.
This is payback for that prior.
Please turn off your computer and turn it back on.
I got in for her computer now.
Oh, you did? Okay, Amanda got in. Wait, Amanda got in, Amanda got in. Bye. Where are we now? In you, in, in the UAE? Mayor, are we in the UAE? In Abu Dhabi, where are we?
I'm in the hotel lobby.
Oh, Franny's on, okay. We got it. Franny, unmute? Good. Okay, let's go, let's move forward. Let's move forward, everyone ready? We're gonna move forward with the appeal number.
Forty-one fifty-five, Perel Keller, Oak Street.
Yes, forty-one fifty-five, Perel Keller, Oak Street.
Okay. Subdivide seventeen lots to create thirty-nine single-family lots, accordance with the requirements of the R seven five zone. It is, it is an R twenty zone.
Okay.
The applicant is seeking bifurcated use density variance to develop a number of R twenty zone dwellings. The single-family dwellings meeting R seven five standards. The parcel is located in the R twenty single-family residential zone district. Single-family detached residents are permitted use in the zone, but at a lower density than proposed.
Before we lost Fran before, I was asking, I was saying that I never got the paperwork on this thing, on this application, if it could be emailed to me.
Franny, do you hear that?
Yeah, but if I go out of the meeting, I don't know if I'll be able to do it for him. Uh, you know what? Sal, where? Alferi, can you forward it to him?
Me and you, Sal, you're not coming in clear.
Not. Better?
Let's try it, let's move on.
What do you want to email address? Mortygross@gmail.com.
I don't know who I'm calling, it's, it's...
Uh, don't worry, Franny, it's fine, Mayor Gelli was sending it there.
No, Miriam has, it doesn't have this application, can she mute herself?
Mayor, she's muted, Mayor Gelli is sending it.
I'm back, hold on, I'm here, sorry. What?
Morty, you got it?
It doesn't have this application, Miriam.
Which one are you doing, I'm so sorry, I'm like, I, I finally had to do some other work, which one are we doing?
Forty-one fifty-five.
Yeah, Mayor, I got it.
Forty-one fifty-nine, we're on?
Oh, fifty-five.
Forty-one fifty-five is not mine?
No, go away.
Oh, I thought...
Okay, I think I turned it off.
Sal, is this your application?
Yes, do you hear me, miss?
Good, ye- yes, I do, go ahead, move on.
Evening, Salvatore Alfieri, Cleary Giacobi, up here, speaking to the applicant. Um, as Fran described, this is only a D variance or density.
Who is that?
Franny, it's Sal Alfieri speaking.
Yes, no, there's somebody else.
There's nobody else.
There is.
I hear a woman speaking in the background, everybody.
I do too.
Abe, it must be from you, or from Fran.
Not me, it's not me.
I don't know. Go ahead, Sal.
It might be, uh, an opposer or somebody, or somebody from a next application, everybody please mute.
Um, as I was saying, this is a...
It's Miriam Weinstein.
She's on mute. She's on mute.
She's on mute, right?
Yeah, everyone's on mute. Okay, go ahead. Sal, I'm sorry for this interruption.
We're used to it.
I can't hear you. You're fading in and out. Sal, you're fading in and out.
I'm not sure why, um, is that better?
We'll keep on going, we'll see if you get faded in and out.
Brian Flannery is our only witness, I'd like to call him up, please.
I'm hearing him, he's not coming in.
He's right there. Brian, go ahead.
Can you raise your right hand?
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional planner, professional planner. Application, candidate, is a bifurcated application, uh, for, uh, density only. It's, uh, seventeen lots with different owners along the Oak Street corridor. We have maps that were, uh, provided that showed, uh, potential, uh, the seventeen lots that are included in the application. I'm sure the board is familiar with Oak Street and the Oak Street corridor, it goes from Route nine all the way into the industrial park. Uh, you've got between, uh, Albert Avenue, Vine is the school district that was put together by the town. And, and this is in an area that, uh, prior to the connection, uh, into the Albert air, area, it was very quiet and, and a very desirable for residential development. The, um, the, uh, the traffic situation today around the peak times for schools, uh, it is, it is just ridiculously heavy traffic. When the school, it's not a school function, uh, again, it's, uh, a, uh, the traffic in there is very manageable because it consists of an R twenty area with, uh, single-family homes. So, the application before you this evening is with respect to the Oak Street, uh, lots only. And, and it's because of that Oak Street corridor that these lots are in requesting it. What has happened along Oak Street, uh, different than, than the rest of the A- Albert neighborhood. The rest of the Albert neighborhood is developing with, uh, newer homes and, and nice, uh, R twenty type lots. The planning board has been granting variances for some of them to, uh, seventeen thousand square feet, fifteen thousand square feet. But all, all applications that make sense to build those luxury, uh, homes on, on luxury lots for Lakewood. Uh, Oak Street hasn't been doing that because it, it's because of the traffic, it's not very desirable. So, uh, what has occurred is a couple of lots have, have, uh, sold to schools. Uh, and the owners along that strip, uh, got together and said, i- if we wanna keep this a desirable residential neighborhood, w- we need to have lot sizes, uh, less than, uh, the R twenty standard. That, that's the only way it makes it a, uh, desirable for residential development. So, uh, uh, the plan as submitted, uh, showed a, uh, potential, uh, subdivision of all these lots and, and most of the lots, as you saw on the TaxMac exhibit, are twenty thousand square foot lots, with the exception of a couple of larger ones that are, uh, forty thousand square foot lots. Uh, the reason we picked ten thousand square foot lots is because all of these owners aren't gonna develop at the same time. So we need the flexibility that if three lots go together, th- they can break it into, uh, ten thousand square lots. Two lots, e- even one lot could develop, uh, and then i- if the board acts favorably on the density, uh, any of these applications would have to come back to this board for subdivision approval. Uh, the, the, the application asks for R seven five setbacks. Uh, and, and the, the basic reasoning for that is the lot widths that we'll come up with, uh, wouldn't, uh, wouldn't meet the R ten criteria. So we're asking for R seven five setbacks, but ten thousand square foot minimum lots. So it's, we're, we're not asking for R tens, we're not asking for R seven fives, we're asking for something very specific. It would be a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet. Uh, so it's, it's smaller than some of the approvals that have been granted in the other area. And, and w- we wanna make it clear in our testimony that the reason for this is this Oak Street corridor. Uh, if, uh, and, and I know some of the neighbors would be concerned that somebody in on, on some of the other streets, Marilyn or Coral, come in and say, well, you gave ten thousand square foot lots on Oak, me too. Uh, I, I, I know the board well enough to know that the board's gonna say, no, Oak Street got that because it's an Oak Street corridor that resulted from the township opening Oak Street up, from the township putting the school district in there. And, and again, s- schools, everybody in Lakewood is in favor of schools. However, a school clo- in close proximity to a residential neighborhood creates traffic problems. Oak Street already has a traffic problem from the schools that are there, uh, compounded by the, uh, the industrial development further to the east. Uh, if, if this whole Oak Street, uh, developed with schools, which is the pattern that's starting, uh, the, the traffic in, in that area would be a nightmare. So, uh, certainly we'd expect that one of the findings of fact, uh, if the board acts favorably in this, would be that the specific, unique location of this on Oak Street i- is what makes, uh, the, the, this application suitable for, uh, the requested density variance. Looking at, uh, Terry's report, um, uh, I, I, I'd like to point out that the R twenty, which is the zone we're in, allows a density of two point one eight dwelling units per acre. We're asking for a, a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet. You can see from the geometry, geometry, that some of these will be larger than that, so some will be ten thousand, some will be larger, but the minimum would be ten thousand square feet. Um, so the, the maximum density we were proposing would, would be four point three six dwelling units per acre. Um, uh, Terry's report, it is, is pretty straightforward. Again, this is an application that, that's very easy to understand. Uh, we need to, uh, present to the board the facts, the special reasons why the board should grant this, the density variance, and, and the special reason, again, being the, uh, the Oak Street corridor that was created here by the township connecting the road and the amount of traffic. And again, I, I, I have to bring up that schools are permitted use in, in this area, a- as in almost every zone in Lakewood. And schools have started, uh, building in this area, in addition to the school zone which located to the west. Uh, and, and the owners of these properties, and, and it's a combination of owners that got together with this idea to kind of preserve the neighborhood, that came up with this concept. Uh, so these owners feel that the area can be redeveloped with ten thousand square foot lots that'll provide housing opportunities. Uh, the justification, uh, if you look at the master plan of two thousand and seventeen, the background information on page two indicates all the growth we have in Lakewood. On page three, it concludes, concludes with, based on this information, it's therefore important that Lakewood Plan for Residential Development to house its growing population. And it's my testimony that by allowing this, uh, slight increase in density, uh, compared to the remainder of the Albert area, w- with an understanding and, and a finding of fact in the ordinance that it's only on Oak Street, because it, it, it is my professional opinion that to do that in the rest of the Albert area would not be appropriate. But to do it on this, uh, collector road, uh, that was created by the township when they created that, uh, school zone uh, and connected to the, uh, Oak Street portion of the Albert neighborhood, uh, does create a situation where these lots are particularly well-suited for the request to relief. Continuing in the master plan on page seven, the vision statement, it says, encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. Uh, and, and it's my testimony that this would be a smart growth planning principle where you see, uh, a, a direction of the development, uh, that, that may come to this area. And, and we're proposing something that provides the housing opportunities and reduces the traffic congestion. Uh, I'm familiar with this area, and I know the residents and, and the owners of these lots are familiar with the area. And the traffic in this area gets very bad during school peak times, and, and the rest of the day, it's fine. And, and the reason for that is because the trips that are generated by the schools, all at the same time, create that traffic problem that we're trying to, uh, uh, address by allowing these lots to be at ten thousand rather than, uh, twenty thousand. Uh, the municipal land use law, NJAC forty colon fifty-five D two, under the purpose of the act, A is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands and estates in a manner which will promote public health, safety morals, and general welfare. And, and it's my testimony that this does, uh, does do exactly that. The, um, uh, G, under the same thing, it's provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agriculture, residential, recreation, and commercial, industrial uses. And, and this does provide for a variety of housing types, even in this Albert Avenue neighborhood. And the Albert Avenue neighborhood, the zoning board, the planning board knows that this whole neighborhood is very concerned with not letting, uh, development ruin the neighborhood. And my professional opinion is that approval of this w- will actually benefit the neighborhood and to an extent save... and to an extent save the neighborhood. Uh, so, uh, these, these variances, as indicated, for the D variances, we have to show, uh, that the variance can be granted without any substantial detriment to the zone planning zoning ordinance, uh, and, and will not impair, uh, will not substantially, uh, impact the, the, the neighborhood. And, and my testimony is that it's better for the neighborhood. My testimony is that based on, on the, uh, the area, that this will be a benefit and it's particularly suited for these particular lots. And the, the board may see a couple of the lots that aren't included in the application. And it's that, uh, a couple of them are, are schools, so obviously they, they don't want to do R ten. And a couple of them are, are neighbors that, um, just did not want to be a part of it. Uh, but it's a majority of the neighborhood, uh, and it's, uh, seventeen separate lots with, uh, most of them different owners that, that are just trying to preserve this neighborhood. Um, so, um, you know, again, my testimony is that the, the relief can be granted without any detriment to the public good and, and it's actually, uh, the intent is to, um, to save the neighborhood and, uh, the, um, no substantial, um, impact on the zone plan and zoning ordinance.
I, a couple of follow-up questions. Uh, first, can, if, if, if this were approved tonight and we come back for subdivision approval, can these individual lots be designed so that a K turn can be, uh, located on each lot so that the occupants and visitors don't have to back out onto Oak Street?
Yeah, yes. The intention would be, and, and it should be a condition of the approval, that there would be because the nature of the application is it's a, a collector road. Uh, the plans that were submitted all show the, uh, availability to make a K turn. All of the lots are very deep, so they provide an opportunity to set the house back far, which accomplishes, uh, a, a couple of benefits. The benefit of providing the parking further from the steep, the street providing the availability to make the K turns and exit, separating the, the house and the residential use from the busy traffic. And, and they all still, um, end up with large rear yards. And, and that's where, again, we're, we're asking for the R seven five setbacks predominantly for the width. Uh, if, if we have fifty foot wide lots, we want to have a thirty-five foot wide house, which will accommodate the Lakewood families and, and be a nice desirable house and a benefit to the whole Albert neighborhood. Uh, and, and this allows the availability to have a nice rear yard. Uh, the, the lot size itself, the ten thousand square foot again, is because a lot of the lots are twenty thousand square feet. And if, if they're being done individually because the separate owners aren't all motivated to, to make that upgrade at the same time, they have the availability to, to do it, uh, on a separate basis.
And based upon that testimony, again, if we're approved, that would come before the board, one large application or multiple applications with various different applicants, is that correct?
That is correct. And, and at that time, again, we have to provide all the, uh, we, we would have to provide a plan that shows that we have the turnarounds. We would have to provide a plan that would address the drainage. Uh, we would address the aesthetics. And, and in normal fashion, uh, we would provide the upgraded architectural features in the front, we would provide irrigation, we would provide only one access to, to the basement, we would provide no outside entrances to the attic so that we're, we're not putting multiple tenants in the basement, we're not putting tenants in, in the attic. We would do all the, the items that the zoning board typically looks for so that we get a, a quality type of development.
But you did, you did, I'm not sure if you responded to one of the comments in Terry's report, but you did, you are acknowledging that water and sewer does have to be provided to these lots if and when developed?
The, the, yes, the, the applicant would, uh, extend the public water and sewer from Oak Street, uh, or, or along Oak Street, uh, from New Hampshire, uh, to service these. Uh, Terry's report does have a couple of other items that, that I would address, uh, the, uh, in his review comments on page three, he asks for the, uh, discussion on the proposed dwellings. And again, it would be a typical R ten type of dwelling. Uh, you know, we would anticipate the, the typical six bedrooms with a basement, as I indicated, we would limit the basement access to, to one outside entrance to the basement and no direct, uh, outside access to the upstairs. Uh, the, uh, he asked for, uh, testimony on the proposed road and subdivision improvements, and they would all be in accordance with township standards. Stormwater management, uh, would be provided on an individual lot basis so that we would not be creating an, an additional stormwater management. Uh, and the trash pickup would all be by, um, the, uh, DPW. And as Terry indicates in comment five, uh, if, if the board approves the density variance, uh, we would come back with fully engineered plans for subdivision, either in, in, in large pieces or, uh, several smaller ones.
That's all the testimony we have, Mr. Chair.
Um, you mentioned to me that these lots are, are, are going to be R ten. I looked at your plan, excuse me?
Plan does indicate a minimum of ten thousand square foot. So I, I did not say R ten, I, I, if I, if I, let me be clear now. The lots, minimum lot size would be ten thousand square feet. We're asking for R seven five, uh, setback requirements.
I'll get to that in a moment. Uh, let's discuss the minimum of ten thousand square feet. Based on your plan that you sent me here, that I see here, there's approximately eleven lots that is below ten thousand square feet. Uh, all the lots on lot twenty, um, um, if you start, if you start on the, on the north side, um, right next to the corner, New Hampshire Avenue, nine thousand nine hundred twenty-seven, nine thousand eighteen, nine thousand eighteen, nine thousand seventeen, seventeen, nine thousand seventeen, eleven lots like this that are below ten thousand square feet.
And, and, and yes, Mr. Chairman, when he drew the plan, uh, there's a inconsistency in that in his, uh, general notes, uh, he indicates proposed ten thousand square foot minimum. He lists the R seven five standards, if you look on variant.
I'll get to, I'll get to that next. So, well, I'm listening, I just want to understand how, how, how this is going to work.
The intent is that they will be ten thousand square foot minimum. Uh, so we're not asking for that, as shown.
I can't hear you?
It should have been, it should have been drawn better to incorporate that. We, we are, we're only asking for approval for, uh, a minimum ten thousand square foot lots, consistent with what was indicated.
Okay.
Is contradictory to, uh, what's shown on the lots. And, and, and that, that will be a matter of figuring out when the applications come in.
Are you bringing in an application right now on a bifurcate application for use variance? Or are you bringing in, you want these many lots on ten thousand square feet? Help me out on that.
We're going, I, I could respond. We're, we're seeking approval for a density variance.
I can't hear you, I missed you. What did you say?
Somebody's flipping papers, I apologize.
Oh, it was me, I'm touching, I'm touching my papers. Go ahead.
Uh, we, when we come back, assuming this is approved for subdivision approval, the number of lots will be a function of a fully designed subdivision with a minimum of ten thousand square feet in error for each lot.
Okay. Um, so you're not, you're not telling me how many lots you want, as long as you can fit in a ten thousand square foot lots, that's as many as you're going to go in there?
Yes.
So, so if you're going to lose one or gain one?
See us gaining any, Brian, do you?
I do not see us gaining any. I see, I see us losing one or two.
Okay, okay. So help me out over here, how is this exactly going to work when you say, um, you want this to be a ten thousand square foot lot with the R seven five setback? So you want to have an R seven five approval here? Or you're looking for an R ten approval, um, with the R seven five, um, program?
Well, this, this is.
You can't use both, either, either one, or you want to use both? You want to, you want to double dip?
No, we, we, we don't want to double dip, we, we want a, uh, want a unique product. And the unique product, and, and the board has the availability to grant that. What we're asking for is, uh, a, a density, uh, a maximum density of four point three six dwelling units per acre. We're asking for, as a condition of that, it be a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet. So if somebody comes in with less than ten thousand square feet, they don't have the density variance. Uh, if they come in with ten thousand square foot minimums, but we're asking for the, uh, the setbacks consistent with an R seven five. So we're looking for a lot width of fifty, a front setback of twenty-five, and, and we, we don't need the front setback of twenty-five. The board would rather go with a front setback of thirty, which is R ten. Uh, so it's, we're, we're only picking the R seven five setbacks that we need, which are the side yard of seven and the, uh, total side yard setback of fifteen. Uh, the rear yard setback, we don't need the R seven five, we can go with the R ten of twenty. Uh, the building height is the same.
So basically, so what you're going on, you want, you want to cherry pick your variances to make it fit what you want. So you're telling me it's, since it's a ten thousand square foot lot, give me ten thousand square foot lot, but now I'm going to apply the R seven five standards and cherry pick whatever it is to make this thing work?
Well, you, you use the term cherry pick and, and it's not the term I would use. Uh, if, if you want a more concise definition, uh, let's say that we want, uh, R ten lots, uh, but in addition to the R ten lot, we want a, uh, a, a minimum lot width of fifty, rather than the R ten would be seventy-five, because the seventy-five doesn't work. And we're not cherry picking, we're taking dimensions that fit the unique circumstances of this property. And then we want, uh, a, a side yard setback, a minimum of seven and a total combined of fifteen. Other than that, we will meet all of the R ten requirements.
Yeah, it's not a big deal because you have the, you have the, you have the depth to it. Um, and you have the height, so that's not, that's not, uh.
It's a unique piece of property that, and, and a unique circumstance. I, I've never presented a, uh, an application to the, to the township in Lakewood where there's, uh, seventeen different lots that are owned by different people.
Brian, it becomes un, it becomes unique when you want to apply the R seven five into the, into a property, so it automatically becomes unique.
Well.
And it doesn't really fit, so you have to create it and it, and it becomes unique.
And, and again, the, the setbacks are a C variance, and the C variances, the board should look at the benefits versus the detriments. The density is what is a D variance, and the density we have to give the special reasons for. And, and I think I've given the special reasons. The, the, the lot width and the side setbacks are a C. And for a C variance, we need to show the benefits outweigh the detriment. And, and my opinion is the, the benefits do outweigh the detriment. And the Albert Ave, Ave Avenue neighborhood, the board knows that these are very concerned residents, and you'll hear from the residents, and, and then the board has to make the decision. Again, it's a D variance, it's not an easy application. Uh, and the board listens to the testimony, they listen to all the testimony and the input, and then the board makes the, uh, the tough decisions.
Okay. Um, Mr. Buckwald, I have a question for you. Um, where is he?
Is that me?
Yeah. Um, I heard testimony now from Brian that we should only, only approve this for this corridor, with Oak Street, because of all the schools and the traffic that's happened there. And therefore, we shouldn't allow anyone else in the neighborhood go forward with a same type of program of an R seven five slash ten, call it what you want, with all these, um, variances. Um, I know in the past, we've been, we've approved something, uh, in the zoning board, and we denied somebody else an approval, and we got sued because of, of, of setting precedent and not allowing him to get the same thing that someone else got just down the block or around the corner. So basically, does that hold water the way, uh, Brian had just explained how we should go forward with, um, an application like this?
Do you hear me?
Now I hear you.
Okay. So I think I got the gist of it. In the background, it's, yeah.
Excuse me?
Hey, is the noise coming from your house?
No.
Okay. How are we doing now? Can we hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I think in order to avoid that situation, that, that the resolution would have to be clear that the board is making a, meaning a fact.
They were what to call, I just, I, I'm not listening anyway. I saw them stop looking at the screen, I thought they were like asking me a question.
Okay, well, the board would have to make it clear in the resolution that they're made a finding of fact that this Oak Street corridor is unique in its own right, and that's why the board made that decision to avoid such a thing. Does that answer your question, Mr. Chairman?
Only the way that the, 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 the zoning board doesn't get sued later on, if we want to deny somebody an application, uh, on a basis on precedent and a basis on, um, what was the other, we once had a very interesting lawsuit, it wasn't precedent, it was discrimination, discriminated a certain, against a certain applicant. Um, you know, I want to make sure that this won't happen if we decide to go forward with this, with this approval.
Well, I wish I, you know, I wish I could give you a crystal ball answer that, you know, the board will never get sued, but, um, I, I, I think if that finding of fact is made by the board, that it is this unique set of circumstances for the Oak Street corridor, and that's why the board's making that decision. I think we're in our best position to avoid such an occurrence.
Hold, hold on one second, please. Give me a minute, give me a minute. It is, it, the noise is coming.
It's Marion.
Yeah, it's coming from my kitchen.
There are a couple of people that are.
One second, one second, guys, guys, one second. What were you saying?
There is, there is a woman or something.
Oh, hold on, the kitchen there is not listening.
Oh, whoops.
All right, Moise, try it now.
No, no, I'm good. I was just going to say that maybe it was somebody else. I do want to bring up to the board that according to what, 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 uh, what the chairman said, that somebody, one of the applicants came across the street, even with possibly even a slightly bigger plant, and we, we turned it down. So I don't see why, you know, why this would do any better, but.
Okay. Um, Hal, what are you saying?
Uh, I'm a little confused, Brian, and maybe it's late, but he's saying ten thousand square feet, and I'm reading where you're talking about thirty-eight single family residence, a minimum of seventy-five hundred square feet. So, I don't know, what do you say? Is it seventy-five hundred square feet or ten thousand?
The, if, Hal, if you look at the plan closely, in, in the lower left-hand corner, it lists what's, what's required for the, uh, what's required for the R twenty, and then below that, it has what's required for the R seven five, but next to the area for the R seven five, it says proposed five thousand square feet. So the, the map up above that has some nine thousand, it's false. It's an inconsistency. So the application, the application is clearly we're asking for.
But the, the, you're pressing for thirty-eight units at seventy-five hundred square feet.
We, you don't have to give us the number of units. If you give us a minimum, uh, a, a, a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet, that's what we're asking for. We're not expecting anything different. We're asking for a density of three-six dwelling units per acre with a minimum lot size of square feet. And, and then all R ten setbacks except for the lot width and, and the side setbacks.
Okay, because the wording is, and we.
Yes.
Brian, Brian, Hal, I, I just have a question what you just said. You just said, don't give us the number of units, but give us the minimum. That means that automatically you're requesting the amount of units you have over here. Based on your testimony which I asked you before, you said that you're going to have seventeen lots, um, and not more, uh, of ten thousand square feet. Maybe you'll lose one or two, but you don't think so. So. So you're basically telling me that you're locking me into, um, 10,000 square feet? So I'll tell you differently. What?
I, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to-
38 and 75.
38, I'm sorry, 38. I, I'll, so I'll tell you differently. Uh, on our normal, on our normal use variances that we do, um, we don't give you, so we just give you, don't give you a number at all. If we don't like it, you don't get it.
And, and we're fine with that.
It's not, it's not, it's, it's, but now to that, you have to tell me what standard lot do you want to put over here? Is it, is it a R75 standard or is it an R10 standard? What size of lot? Because I can't give you both.
I don't think the applicant or the board need to be locked into the sizes that are in the ordinance. I think it's a benefit to both the applicant and the board and the general public if we say minimum lot area of 10,000 square feet, minimum lot width of 50 feet, minimum lot-
You, what you're putting in, you're putting us in a position that if the lot has 10,000 square feet and the lot is 50 wide, you're automatically going to get that. Regardless, you, you're not letting us, um, tell you later that it doesn't work.
So, so help me out then on what you think-
I, I don't know.
To accomplish what we're trying to, to do here. I, uh, if, if there's some language that, uh, you know, we need to have a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, but we have to, uh, address all of the, uh, C, C variance requirements. If you, if you just give us the 10,000 square feet and don't give us the side setbacks, then when we come back with the subdivision, you would have the availability to turn us down on anything you want.
I, I, you know, I would say perhaps something different. A minimum of 10,000 square feet. I won't tell you the front widths because then all of a sudden, I'm out. I'm not giving, I'm not giving you the width of 50.
And if, and if that makes the board comfortable, the applicant would be okay.
I, I didn't even know, I didn't even know if that makes the board comfortable. But I'm trying to say, maybe, you know, we just finished a very heavy application around the corner from here where you heard, where a lot of people were complaining that it just doesn't make sense in an R40 to put in R10s and an R20, even though what you're telling me may be true, maybe not true, but perhaps it's, it's like a square peg in a round hole. You know, you know what I'm saying? I'm not saying it's, I'm not saying it's not good, but if you want, perhaps later we'll tell you that 50 is not going to work. I want this lot to be at 75 feet because it just doesn't look right. I don't know.
And, and, and if the, if the board grants the vent, the density requested and says a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, so that an applicant cannot come back with less than 10,000 square feet and doesn't give us any other bulk relief, the bulk relief would have to be granted at the time of subdivision, and the board would have the opportunity, if they don't think it's proper, to turn it down. I would just like to say though, that the, our intention is to come in with 50-foot wide lots because that's what makes sense. So if the board feels uncomfortable giving us, uh, a, a, a-
We lost Abe. One second, I think we lost Abe. Abe, are you there? We lost him.
I, I, Jake went bad when he said, "I said something and it may not be the truth." Because I swore to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
You always do.
Somehow he got bounced off for, for that comment. And, and it wasn't me that did, but a higher power maybe.
You always tell the truth, Brian.
Brian?
You want to say remote, huh?
Wait for Abe to get back on.
Let's wait until he gets back on.
Okay. Okay.
My internet shut down. I have to go reboot my router.
He has to reboot his router. Okay, we'll wait.
Give me a minute. I just, it just, it just shut down on me.
Okay. All right, let's vote.
Hold on a second. Let me see if I'm getting back on.
Checking. Yeah, I'm back.
Back on, okay. Can I just ask a question to the chat?
Okay, go ahead. What, what was I missing?
We waited for you, don't we?
Okay, Brian? Go ahead.
Well, the, the plan clearly depicts what we're proposing. In the lower left-hand corner, it says, "The spot area, 10,000 square feet." All the other setbacks, it says, "Future subdivision applications."
Where, where are you? What, what, what are you reading?
I'm reading the, uh, use variance plan that was submitted. Very lower left-hand corner, under where it says proposed. So all we're proposing is 10,000 square foot minimum lot size. If the board approves the density variance with a condition of 10,000 square foot lot, all of the other setback criteria need to be, uh, uh, applied for at the time of the subdivision application. So the board has complete control of the subdivision applications that come back.
You see, it says, it says 10,000 square feet, but required 7,500. So you're, you're racing that required 7,500?
Well, that, that's lifting the R75 requirements. Clarification, and then it's probably not here at all. Just ignore that. Proposed is what we're asking for. Proposed, the only thing we're asking for to grant us is 10,000 square feet.
So, so if you come back- Okay, so if you're going to come back later-
We'll be at the discretion of the board. We'll have to prove to you the C2 criteria that the benefits outweigh the detriment. And if you disagree with us, you have the availability to turn it down.
So, so, so if you decide later on that you want to have, um, se- uh, seven and a half feet side yard setbacks, we'll tell you we want 12 because we want it to the applicant standard.
You can do that. I hope you don't.
I understand that.
We intend to come back with seven and a half. And we're going to show you, we're going to show you an application that's going to be beautiful. But you have, you will have the right to turn it down.
I think, I think, I think I've said my piece for now. And I'm going to turn it over to fellow board members. Mayor, give me a second too. Do you hear what they have to say? Mayor Gilly go first. Mo, you're next.
Okay, so, Mr. Bryant, a couple of questions. You're, you're talking about rezoning the lots which are circled highlighted, right?
We're, we're talking about a, uh, a density variance.
Have to move your phone again. Abe?
Oh, let me move my phone. Okay.
Yes, we're, we're requesting a density variance. Uh, a, it's a D variance for density on just the lots that are highlighted.
So let me ask you a question. If the whole area is R20, we're taking these lots and making them a different zone. Why isn't that called spot zoning?
Well, first of all, making them a different zone because all-
It's not because the lot next door, like, look at lot number 19. So number 17 and 20 is going to be R10 with an R75 criteria. And in between that, stuck in R20 and number 19. How does that make sense?
Well, those, those property owners did not want to be part of the application. And, and those property owners didn't want to-
I understand that, but so either you get those property owners to agree, the whole area agree, or the whole area doesn't agree. But how can you have one lot R20, one lot R10 with a 750 criteria? It doesn't make sense.
But we, we could have come to the board with one, two, three, four, five, 15 applications and say-